Well, good evening. Welcome to City of Lincoln City City Council meeting for Monday, January 14th, 2019. It is 6:00 PM. If you wish to speak on an agenda or non-agenda item, please sign up on the sheet near the entrance door to the council's chambers. You will be called to speak during the public comment section. Comments or testimony on agenda items listed in our public hearing, public comment will be taken at that time. Roll call, please.
Don Williams.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Yes.
Riley Hoagland.
Here.
Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Judy Casper.
Here.
And Susan Walkie.
Here.
Would you please all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will miss that most of all. It sounds different up here. Well done. Consent agenda. We had one poll from the city recorder, number three, regular minutes, meetings of training, minutes of training, January 7th, 2019, 5:30 PM. And then we had a request from Counselor Walkie to pull all but one and two.
I'd like to pull four, five, and six and set them over until after the new counselors are sworn in. One of them, so Resolution 2019-01, and I think the 2019 council should pass that.
Anyone else?
Are we, Your Honor, counsel, are we choosing to place them elsewhere on the agenda?
Yes, right after the swearing in of the new counsel.
So after H.
Okay. So we'll have another consent agenda after H?
Yes. So need a motion?
So I move to approve consent agenda items one and two.
A second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Come on, guys, it hasn't been that long. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Comments from outgoing elected officials. In case anyone didn't know why we're here tonight, and part of why we're here tonight is to say goodbye to Counselor Walkie and myself. So Counselor Walkie?
Thank you. Thank you all for coming today. Offer cake and look what we get. Brings me back to the crowds that we had for the VRD ordinances.
Could not end without that. I wasn't going to say anything.
I'm grateful for the opportunity to have served on city council for the past four years. Looking back, we've accomplished many things that I hope will make Lincoln City a better place to live, work, and play. I want to thank all the people who supported me in my run for mayor. We came so close. I wish Mayor Anderson a productive four years in office, and I want to thank him and the rest of the council for their dedication and willingness to serve the citizens of Lincoln City.
At the last meeting, I pretty much said what I wanted to say. But on a larger picture, there's a quote that I like. It's from Ronald Reagan concerning the presidency. He says, "To a few of us here today, this is a solemn and most momentous occasion, and yet in the history of our nation it is a commonplace occurrence. The orderly transfer of authority, as called for in the Constitution, routinely takes place, as it has for almost two centuries. And a few of us stop to think how unique we really are. In the eyes of many in the world, this every four-year ceremony we accept as normal is nothing less than a miracle." This is tiny. This is not nationwide, it's not incredibly momentous, but it is that building brick, that block in our government, in our culture. So I just am always stunned by the fact that we can have elections, we can have ranker, and then we settle down to do the work of the people. And I want to thank everyone here for that opportunity to serve as mayor. And that's what I've got. So we now move on to... Oh, and I will say, I stopped Ron in the hall, and I said, "The one thing I'm looking forward to is as soon as I meet Ron again, he'll say, 'Hello, Don.'" It's been hello, Mayor, for four years. I want to hear my name, Don. Okay. So now we conduct the oath of office.
Recede.
No, after. No, we do the oath of office, and then we recess to have our reception.
The flag's heavier than the plastic base. We will get out of the way.
Yeah, right? Go over here.
Okay, repeat after me. Hold your, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I'm going to let you hold the microphone.
Aye.
Aye. Dick Anderson.
Do upon my oath affirm...
Do upon my oath affirm...
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
And laws of the United States of America...
And the laws of the United States of America...
And the state of Oregon...
And the state of Oregon...
And the Charter and ordinances...
And the Charter and ordinances...
Of the city of Lincoln City...
Of the city of Lincoln City...
And that I will faithfully and honorably...
And that I will faithfully and honorably...
Perform the duties of the office of councillor, of mayor...
Perform the duties of the office of mayor...
Of the city of Lincoln City, Oregon...
Of the city of Lincoln City, Oregon...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
And now for the Mitch and Diane and Counselor-elect Parsons, Counselor-elect Coos. We're going to do all three of you together, and Counselor-elect Mark. So the one in the center gets to hold this.
A right hand.
So on that, just kind of a little bit of an angle here, so everyone can see the pictures. So raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, and then your names.
Aye, Mitch Parsons.
Do upon my oath affirm...
Do upon my oath affirm...
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
And laws of the United States of America...
And laws of the United States of America...
And the state of Oregon...
And the state of Oregon...
And the Charter and ordinances...
And the Charter and ordinances...
Of the city of Lincoln City...
Of the city of Lincoln City...
And that I will faithfully and honorably...
And that I will faithfully and honorably...
Perform the duties of the office of councillor...
Perform the duties of the office of councillor...
Of the city of Lincoln City, Oregon...
Of the city of Lincoln City, Oregon...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I'm moving.
I'm moving.
I am.
Well, he's moving.
I'm moving, because I need to be at the corner. I get in trouble too much.
Who recesses here?
Dick does. So you go reconvene, and then the mayor will...
And then you, what are you, what number two? Where am I going? You're two. I'm one. Riley, where's Riley? Riley's two.
Backside Jim Duggan.
Three there.
Oh.
Have a good night.
I don't know, this is somebody...
Nice to meet you.
I forgot about it.
I forgot about it.
Yeah, good idea.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to see you.
Just because I'm Dick's old team.
Not me.
At a new computer there?
Yeah.
Got to get him a...
Way around.
All right.
I don't know. Ah, which helping?
This we just got tonight.
All right. Why don't we come back to order if we can, and given the swearing in, this would be a great time to have any additional comments from the new counselors. Here's your probably one and only opportunity to say something that you won't be disputed with or argued with. So Rick, why don't...
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
Let me say that, Counselor Mark.
Counselor Mark. Well, it is an honor, and I'm full of apprehension and high hopes, and I hope I certainly was humbling to campaign and to win the endorsement of so many people to sit here, and I hope I live up to expectations.
Coach Coos, Diane, all yours, all the way down at the far right.
All the way down here. Now, just because I'm taking your seat doesn't mean anything for four years.
Okay.
I'm just very excited, very positive. I think we're going to get a lot done in four years, and want to thank everybody who voted, and voted anytime. Anytime you vote is important. I'm excited to go.
Great. Mitch, all yours.
I'll keep it short and simple. Thank you to everyone that voted for me. Obviously, you didn't need to. I ran in opposed. Thanks for that. I look forward to being here and just doing great work and listening to all of your concerns.
Great. Thank you both, all three. Let me just, if I can, before we do recess, remind us all that, as you've done, the new counselors thank those who elected you, and they have some expectations from you, and that's certainly to be available to them. I would hope you'd make yourself readily available for their comments and concerns, and that you would share information with them, with the public, your ward, about what goes on here. Again, trying to make sure the correct information gets out. But then, you know, even though you're elected as a ward, remind you that when we're doing the work of city council, that we're one unit, and we only operate as one unit, and that, again, contrary to the belief that you protect where you sleep in Lincoln City and in this role, I would hope that you see Lincoln City as one entity and not with three wards. And things aren't necessarily fair, and you'd see that and argue your points, but remember that we're all for the citizens of Lincoln City. So with that, I'm going to ask us to recess this meeting for 15 minutes. That'll get us back 6:30 if we can, have some cake and juice, and congratulate those new counselors, and also thank Don and Susan for their time with us and service. We're recessed.
Mics are off.
They're pretty quiet.
They're not off.
Oh, there we go. Mics are on.
Everyone jumps.
We all know the mics are working.
All right, why don't we reconvene in the meeting? Thank you all for taking that break and wishing goodwill to those who are leaving and also to those who are staying for the next four years. Thank you.
It's four years?
Four. Yeah, somebody. Four years.
Too late. The ship has sailed.
Yes. All right, at this point, our first order of business is a continuation of the remaining consent agenda items. We'll take them individually. Resolution 2019-09, a resolution extending Lincoln City's workers' compensation coverage to volunteers of the city of Lincoln City. There any questions of staff?
Since we have some new council members, I thought I'd go ahead and explain this. So, the city, we have many volunteers that work for the city in various departments, like our Parks and Recreation, the Explore Lincoln City, and the library. And under our insurance, we're required to provide workers' compensation, and that also applies to all the councils, boards, and committees that we have. And this resolution is an annual resolution that basically restates that we're providing that for our volunteers that do all these things, and it's a requirement from CIS, who's our insurer. And so this is just a housekeeping thing that'll come up again every year for the next four years while you're on council.
Any questions from council? Would that entertain a motion to approve the resolution 2019-01?
I move to adopt resolution 2019-01. Extending Lincoln City workers' compensation to coverage volunteers of the Lincoln City, city of Lincoln City.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed with a nay? Hearing none, passed. Item number five was the Oregon Liquor Control Commission, application for full on-premise commercial sales license for JZ Brothers Corp. ADBA Muja. Mom Javi Express. Mo JV, thank you. Express. Any questions? Otherwise entertain a motion for approval?
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve, a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed with a nay? Hearing none. And then Oregon Liquor Control Commission, application for limited on-premise sales license for Keith and Elizabeth Altamard, the Bijou Theater.
Make a motion to approve application for limited on-premise sales for the Altamards.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed with a nay? Hearing none. Great, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe we have number three to do as well.
Three got pulled.
Oh, that's right. Sorry.
See, we'll see it another, another day. All right, at this point then, let's go to aye on the agenda, which is comments from citizens present. Miles, you're up first.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Miles Schlesinger, a new property owner of a residential condominium my daughter, son-in-law, and I have purchased on Devil's Lake. I am making the following suggestion as an interested citizen, not as a member of the Lincoln City Planning Commission, but as a citizen and former businessman looking into the future of Lincoln City. I am hopefully looking at creating better job, better living wage jobs for all of our current and future residents. My suggestion, what I am suggesting is that the council discuss and appoint a blue ribbon committee comprised of local members of our community to work in conjunction with the Urban Renewal and Economic Development Department under Mrs. Robertson, Explore Lincoln City under the direction of Ed Rystad, Chamber of Commerce Manager Lori Arce Torres, David Price of OCC fame, and other labor and government officials, and whoever the council thinks can benefit more living wage jobs in Lincoln City. Any interested businessman or woman who would be interested in making Lincoln City a more diversified community, and that means more living wage jobs, could be eligible to serve on this committee. It is my opinion that only with good, strong, local buy-in from our hospitality, our local hospitality industry, can we find businesses that can strengthen our economy and have more full-time living wage jobs. The first place in this long process is already begun by the city council, and that is our lack of housing, and that is being addressed. The second step is identifying the types of businesses we are looking for. The third step is to train our sales force, which will be participating in our blue ribbon committee. And the fourth and final step is to send this team of people out to recruit businesses. I find it offensive to be living in one of the most beautiful places in the United States and the poorest city in Lincoln County, and Lincoln County does not rate that high on income as far as the state goes also. And my neighbors basically are working during the good time of the year, which is four months of tourist season. As a businessman, I have seen many deals go together over my development of our hospitality industry business that I worked in since graduation from University of Oregon. And I have seen more deals that are put together by businesspeople who know other businesspeople, and I am suggesting that after the blue ribbon committee determines the type of businesses we desire, then we can create a team of business leaders to go out and sell Lincoln City as a great place to live and develop their business, businesses. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Miles. Thank you very much. All right. Kevin Koffel?
Good evening, good evening, council members. My name is Kevin Koffel. Firstly, I'd like to thank our wonderful city manager for his recent help with an issue and his continuing help working for the city. And something former Mayor Williams said about our little piece of government here. Even though it is a small piece, it is our government, and the decisions that you make really affect people a lot. And when it comes to questions, careful deliberation, and specific wording, the importance of that you just cannot overemphasize. You know, the decisions that you make, you know, affect all of us. And, and they're, and you, sometimes you just don't know what the consequences are, you know, until you've got to try something to find out. But questions and careful deliberation is something to consider. And I want to welcome the new mayor and the new council members, and thank you for your interest in the city of Lincoln City's government. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, let's see, Scott? Drain?
Torres. I'm all for what this guy says. You guys make a difference on when you make a decision, and there's a lot of people that depend on the decisions that you make. That's one of the reasons I'm here tonight. My name is Scott Torrance, and I own Bear Valley Nursery. And we've been putting up with construction down along my way for a long time, years and years, and we're getting ready to have some more, we're getting ready to put some sidewalks in from 19th Street all the way down to 23rd Street. And I've been talking to Lila Bradley for a few years now about that being done. It's been well-needed, and it needed to be done a long time ago. But now it's getting ready to happen, and the shoe's on the horse, and I just, I got a lot of questions and concerns. You know, I can't stress how many times I've called Lila Bradley about construction work in this town being done at the wrong times and impacting businesses in a bad way. I think that you folks should protect the businesses that hire the people in the town. And this is a tourist town, and if you take Taft Bay for an example, for two years I've been calling about Taft Bay and the construction getting into our tourist season. And you know, if I'm a tourist and I can't make my stops, and I stop in Newport or Yaw Hots or something, and I might like that better, and I may never come back. And it's really is unfortunate, the timing of projects. So, this sidewalk project, we don't know the timing of it yet, and that's why I'm here. If this happens in spring, my business, along with Habitat for Humanity, my neighbor, James Drayton, and Bob Small Engine just down from me, we could all suffer from sidewalks going in because we're all spring and early summer month businesses. And if you use the little bit of work that was done at the Hilltop last year for an example, that thing bottlenecked and backed the traffic up so bad, and they weren't even on the highway, they were on the intersection. We have emerging lane there, we have no shoulder on either side of the road, and they're going to run a storm drain system down in front of the Habitat. And during the meeting, they said that they would not take a lane, which is impossible. They're going to take a lane. If they take a lane, there's going to be very little for a center lane there, and it's already a bad bottleneck. So, I'm here to ask the council to consider paving or doing the work at night on this project. I was talking to the city manager today, and the estimated costs were only for day operations and no night operations, which is kind of bewildering to me because you would think that any substantial project would be estimated both ways. Lila Bradley just whispered in my ear back there that it could be between $20,000 and $50,000 overture for working at night. I actually disagree with that. I think that there's way more benefits for night work than day work in this town. First of all, you don't have a flagger on every entrance trying to get the people in and out. The Habitat for Humanity is just almost as busy as we are, and we're really busy. In May, we make one-fifth of our entire yearly gross is made in May. So if you do the math, April is before May, and June is after, they were horrific months for us. That will just devastate us. And I don't want to talk bad about old people because I'm getting kind of gray myself, but a lot of our customers are elderly, and it doesn't take much for confusion, and confusion causes accidents and mishaps and this kind of stuff. So, we're concerned about the ingress and egress of not only our business, but our neighbor to the north, Jim Drayton's business, and our other neighbors to the south, the Habitat. We're not sure if they plan on having a flagger on each of these intersecting points, and then one at each end of the project to keep the flow of traffic if they're working during the daytime moving, which seemed ludicrous to me, being Davis Bacon work, which is prevailing wage work for, is that my time's up?
Yeah. So, just finish up.
Okay.
You go.
Five seconds?
Just wrap it. Yep.
Anyways, I'd ask that you maybe would talk to the city manager, and he can explain all the other factors I talked to him about today. As far as the pedestrians, there's no room for them to walk, are they going to get ushered through? And then at what point, they're going to, they're going to put this out for bid either way, but at what point does the city actually say, oh, we probably better stick with the daytime because it's going to be too expensive at night? What value do you put on the safety of people and the project?
Thank you. Thanks for bringing that forward because it's certainly the right time before we start.
I agree.
So, thank you.
So, why don't we just pass it and be done with it while I'm here?
It's why they call this public comment, not, not public discussion. Thank you, though.
You bet. My last comment is, I would have had a hard time swearing the oath because laws were meant to be broken, they wanted to have them, so I try to be good.
I hear you. I hear you.
Thank you.
All right. Patrick Alexander.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Patrick Alexander, and I'm the president of the Lincoln City Warming Shelter. And I wanted to take just a few minutes of your time to give you a quick update on our operation so far this winter. After council approved the emergency declaration that is currently allowing us to operate out of Taft Hall, several members of council expressed an interest in our group developing a mitigation plan to help address some of the homelessness problems in Taft area. Our board developed such a plan, which I personally hand-delivered to 125 residences and businesses in the area surrounding the shelter. Copies were also supplied to the city manager, members of the city council, and to councilors elect. We also put a copy of the draft plan on our website and solicited input from the public via local media outlets. To date, we've received one response to the draft plan, and this feedback has been duly considered as part of the board's overall discussions, and we aim to approve a final version of the mitigation plan at our next meeting on Monday, January 21st. And in other news, so far, this winter has proved to be both warmer and wetter than last winter, and as a result, the shelter has been open for fewer nights, just eight so far compared to 19 by this point last winter, although we're open tonight. So as of tomorrow, that will raise to nine. The interesting thing, though, was that we've also seen fewer people making use of the shelter each night. In December 2017, we served an average of 14 clients each night the shelter was open. In December 2018, that number has halved to an average of seven per night. And as we delved into the data to try and find a reason for this reduction, we found cause for great optimism. We found that the demand for overnight severe weather shelter has decreased dramatically as a direct result of the success of our Resource Referral Program. This program, which aims to identify the root causes of homelessness, served 61 people last year. Of that total, 25 were people who had made use of the warming shelter, the overnight shelter. And of those 25, 18 obtained housing as a result of their participation in the program. That's a housing success rate of 72% for that population. So thanks to that problem, these 18 people are able to enjoy the warmth and security that all of us take for granted, not just on nights when temperatures go below 40 degrees, but every night. In just one year, the Resource Referral Program has had a significant impact on tackling long-term homelessness. And so I would like to thank the city council for the financial support that has allowed our group to operate and develop this program, as well as the emergency declaration, which has allowed us to continue offering severe weather shelter this winter. Work is well underway on finding new premises from which we hope to continue our work in coming years, and we look forward to working with the city council as that process goes on. Thank you very much for your time and thank you for your service.
Thank you. And Amanda Cherry Holmes.
My name is Amanda Cherry Holmes, and I'm the program director for Lincoln City Resource Center and Emergency Warming Shelter. Good evening, city councilors and Mayor Anderson. I'd like to say a special thank you for your support in previous years and for your continued support through our growing pains. Every once in a while, I like to come in and give you a progress report to let you know about what we have been up to and how we have yet again expanded our services. I have provided each of you a goodie bag with more detailed information about our latest partnerships for collaboration efforts since my time with you is so limited. As you can see, we have been very busy. On the document titled "New Partnerships for Collaboration Efforts," it talks about our new partnerships, with the first one being the Transportation Program for Families that we created and implemented last summer. In your goodie bag, you will find a laminated pass that says either Kids' Summer Pass or Teens' Summer Pass. In partnership with Lincoln County Transit, we created these season passes to bridge the gap between school-aged children in need of meals throughout the summer and meal sites. There were 80 families that utilized this program over the summer in Lincoln City with no issues or complaints from the bus drivers or the users. Because of the success of this program, it will not only happen again this coming summer, it will also be created for every city in Lincoln County. The second bullet point talks about our partnership with Project Homeless Connect, which has previously only been hosted in Newport. For those who are not aware, Project Homeless Connect is a county effort to get services more accessible for the people in need. Previously, Project Homeless Connect was an annual event hosted by Newport with access to 20-plus providers locally and state affiliated, as well as additional services such as haircuts, dental van, HIV and Hep C testing, eye exams, and pet services. Although these services are needed, the event only happened once a year. Given the size and stability of our current facility we are in, we were able to take Project Homeless Connect to the next level, which is to do smaller events with five to six providers every month based on a theme. You will find our Project Homeless Connect themes by month attached to our first flyer announcement of our event on the 24th of this month. Creating this partnership helps us to fulfill our goal of being a one-stop-shop business model, adding comprehensive navigation services to our Resource Center efforts. The last new partnership on the list is with our county community action agency, Community Services Consortium, on a statewide effort to ending veteran homelessness. Various agencies throughout Lincoln County were invited to participate in this effort, which will include several virtual meetings as well as in-person training sessions to learn exactly what protocol we need to follow in order to get our veterans off the streets and out of homelessness. The first in-person training session is February 5th and 6th in Eugene, and we will be there representing Lincoln City at a state-level capacity. This partnership gives us the ability to advocate for our homeless veterans and essentially become the bridge between our homeless veterans and Oregon's statewide effort to end veteran homelessness. There is light at the end of this very dark tunnel. In closing, I would like to emphasize that in order for us to continue our safety net efforts by expanding services and addressing the needs of those who fall through the cracks, we need your continued support, both verbally and especially financially. Our community dream is no longer a dream, it is a tangible reality. We have achieved goals within a timeframe most thought to be impossible. Help us to continue turning our community dreams into achievable goals.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks for bringing the information forward. Marie, I see you're doing public hearing, so we'll call you when that comes. Is there anybody else that neglected to sign up that would like to make a comment? Mr. Narikas?
Good evening, Your Honor Mayor Anderson and honorable council members. Thank you all for volunteering your time and energy for the benefit of our community. We have a mayor with the education, skills, work ethic, and experience that leadership requires. Please consider assisting him in forming partnerships and pursuing compromise as you all work towards strengthening the city's well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that missed this opportunity? All right then. Thank you. We'll move on to our next agenda item, and that's a presentation on the Heritage Tree Program for Lincoln City Parks and Recreation.
Thank you very much. My name is Jeannie Sprague, Lincoln City Parks and Recreation Director. I am here with two members of the Parks and Recreation Board. I'm going to step back here in a second, just be in the background to answer any questions should you have them after the presentation. They are presenting a recommendation to city council that was brought to our Parks and Recreation Board by a Lincoln City resident. So would you like to introduce yourself?
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name's David Jamison. I'm on the Parks and Rec Board, and I'm joined by Donna Eddy, fellow Parks Board member. And we're here this evening to present the Heritage Tree Program, sponsored by Oregon Travel Experience, as a matter of fact, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a few minutes. So our goals for you this evening are twofold. First of all, to learn about this Heritage Tree Program. And secondly, to direct Lincoln City Parks and Rec to implement the Heritage Tree Program in Lincoln City public spaces. So the agenda this evening will cover three key areas. First of all, we'll talk about this Heritage Tree Program, what it is, what it's made of, talk about the benefits of the Heritage Tree Program to the city of Lincoln City, and then we'll talk about whether or not there are any restrictions as a result of a tree or grove of trees being included in the Heritage Tree Program. So first of all, the goals of the program, first of all, to recognize trees as significance. These are trees that have a historical value, a place in our history, maybe because of their size, their location, their importance to the species overall. There are four reasons, as a matter of fact, that a tree or grove of trees can be included in the Heritage Tree Program. The first is that the tree or group of trees is associated with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad pattern of our history. Secondly, the tree or group of trees is associated with the life of a person or group of historic significance. That's an important one. Third, that the tree or grove of trees represents a significant and distinguishable entity within a community or location. And fourth, the tree or group of trees has age, size, or species significance that contributes to its heritage status. So for any of these four reasons, a tree could be nominated to become part of the Heritage Tree Program. It's also, this program is also to educate the public about the value of these specific trees. Think about some of these large trees that have been around for 600, 800 years, their size, their importance to the ecosystem. The educational value is huge when trees or grove of trees are included. And of course, to promote the appreciation of these trees, these old-growth trees, trees of significance, trees that help tell a story, trees that are important to a group or a person. I mean, a lot of appreciation for these trees is something we want people to experience. So Oregon Travel Experience oversees this program. If you're not familiar with Oregon Travel Experience, it's a quasi-state governmental agency. One thing I'm sure you're familiar with, as you drive up and down the I-5 corridor, you notice those blue signs on the side of the highway. The blue signs often will direct you to something like a rest area. Well, Oregon Travel Experience oversees 17 rest areas throughout the state. Some of those rest areas offer free coffee. Well, Oregon Travel Experience volunteers are the ones providing the coffee and information about the locale. Those blue signs will also direct you to hotels and motels, gas stations, restaurants along your route. And the blue signs will also direct you to attractions. Think about wineries and other places where tourists might want to visit. So that's all Oregon Travel Experience-related. They do two other things that are very important. First of all, they do the historical markers that you'll see on the side of the highway. For example, if you're headed west on Highway 18, just west of Grand Ronde, there's a historical marker that talks about the Oregon experience. It's just on the west side of Grand Ronde, on the north side of Highway 18. Anyway, that's Oregon Travel Experience Program, those are historical markers. And then, of course, they do this Heritage Tree Program, and that's what we're here to talk to you about tonight. So with this program, we also can be part of an annual awards ceremony. There's also a directory of trees that is produced on Oregon Travel Experience's website, and a map of trees. So one of, a good example of a heritage tree is this one right here. This is down the Cape Perpetuus Scenic Area. Many of you may have taken the one-mile hike to the Giant Spruce. That Giant Spruce became part of the Heritage Tree Program in 2007. That tree is estimated to be 600 years old. It stands 185 feet tall. Imagine the things it has seen over its history. So of course, if we became part of this program, one of our trees may show up on this map right about here somewhere. On the right-hand side here, you'll see each of these trees also is clickable. You can drill down, learn more about the tree. So this is all part of what Oregon Travel Experience provides as part of the Heritage Tree Program. Okay, with that, I'm going to turn the rest of the presentation over to my colleague, Donna.
I think you should keep going. You speak.
Happy to keep going.
My name is Donna Eddy. I moved here five years ago, and I've been on the Board of Parks and Recreation for a year, and I absolutely love it. And I want to say something a little bit off the subject first before I start. I am so impressed and delighted with the past city councils and the governments of Lincoln City that they had the foresight to save all the open space land and all the trails. I have, I'm a hiker, and I have never lived in a place that you can just go out and all of a sudden you're hiking through a forest. And you've been, you know it from a neighborhood. It's wonderful, and I'm very proud of our town that we did that. So that's the main reason I'm on the Parks and Recreation Board. Because I want to keep that.
Donna, can I, I hate to interrupt you, but you need to come right up to the mic because everybody can hear you on TV.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll slide, move it towards you.
Slide the whole thing. You can tell I'm a really great speaker.
You're good. No problem.
This is the benefits. Public education for tree value, which is very important in our area. We have so many beautiful trees along all the hikes. And the one at Regatta Park that we're interested in right now is just amazing and has such history. Exposure of Lincoln City parks and open spaces. Part of statewide dedication ceremony and the free interpretive plaques that will be presented to us if we accomplish this. This is a copy of a plaque, and as you can see, tells the tree, tells the history of the tree, which I think that's very important. It also does the age and I don't know all the information that they would put on there. It would differ, I'm sure, with every plaque. But this would be presented to us, and right now, there's just a little plaque at the tree in Regatta Park. And this, if we got the Heritage Tree information in, and this would be what we could have for trees. And we have other trees that we're looking at that could be the same way. There's some up in Cascade Head Villages that are amazing. There's no restriction on heritage trees. It's an honorary program and no protection status. So it's, it's just kind of an amazing thing that people can come and look at, and, but if we want to chop it down, we can. I don't know. But there's no, no restrictions. Cost to the city minimal. Costs of staff time and apply for free nomination benefits outweigh the cost. And I think that the Parks and Recreation would be very glad to jump in and do as much as they could to make this happen. And that's my big thank you.
It's a nice thank you. Thank you. All right. Are you?
I'm done.
And you take some questions?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay. Pull, any, any questions from the?
Another mic.
Yep. Pull it right down.
Now, see, I could have talked in that mic and you could have.
Mr. Mark?
Thank you for the presentation. I guess my big question is, I'm familiar with Riley's pet tree at Regatta Park. Are there other specific trees that you've identified in town?
That is the first tree that we have identified and will be the focus of this program to begin with. Hopefully, others will come up too.
Other, other questions, councilors? You know, I have a couple if I can. It was important to note, and a thank you for the costs. That's always, if there's going to be ongoing maintenance or something like that, that's important to know. My other notes indicated a question more on, does this somehow tie into being a tree city? Does it complement? How does all these tree things help Lincoln City?
I'm not sure if this helps with Tree City USA status. I'm not sure how that program works exactly, but there is, I think, significant PR value in being part of this program because our tree would be featured on the Oregon Travel Experience website. And it would, there's this annual awards ceremony, and all of that will generate PR for the city. So I think it will hopefully also encourage people to come as tourists and check out these magnificent trees that really do tell a great story and are unique and significant. trees that really do tell a great story and are unique and significant. I mean, think about the path they created at Cape Perpetua Scenic Area for that Giant Spruce, you know, and that's a great hike in and of itself. So, I think there are lots of great benefits to attracting people to the city.
I guess I'm just wondering if there's a way to combine forces, citizen, volunteer forces with the heritage and the tree. Because I know there's requirements with being a tree city and somehow, you know, spread, I'd hate to lose either one of the groups. And so, if we could combine citizens into...
You know, that might be a good takeaway as for us to research what it takes to become part of whatever the Tree City program is. I'm not that familiar with it.
So, the Tree City USA designation is through Oregon Community Trees. It's a nonprofit program, not so much like Travel Oregon. It's a simple process, too. It's simply an application process, and they look at what we spend per capita on urban forestry. So, it's a little bit different from this, but it also helps with giving a good focus to Lincoln City and Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, I didn't mean to imply getting rid of either one, or even though one isn't there yet. It's just combining forces so that all the citizens that are interested in pursuing trees and recognition, we don't lose them.
Right.
You know, one, one bigger committee that can oversee both might be helpful.
I think that'll be David and Donna.
That's what I wondered. Any other questions?
I haven't.
You have to come up?
I volunteer at the Chamber, and I'm involved at the Cultural Center. And both places have really great pamphlets and information when people come into town of what to do. And I imagine, I'm not sure, but I imagine if we get on that map of having a heritage tree, that, that there would be pamphlets involved that would be in both places.
Yeah, I'm sure that would be. That'd be great.
You know, right off the bat.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Hinton?
I have a suggestion for your second tree. If you, if, we did, there's one in the villages, right where, you know, yeah, everybody knows where it is.
Must have their eye on it already, huh?
Yeah.
You?
You're talking Cascade Head?
No.
In the villages?
It's, well, as you go, the road curves to the left.
Get into the mic. Okay. All right. Is there action required?
Yeah, there is. I mean, our ask was that you direct Lincoln City Parks and Rec to implement the Heritage Tree Program in Lincoln City public spaces.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If it's a motion, may, is it a, may I make a motion to approve ZOA 2008-03? No. Nope, sorry. Is it four?
Go to page 35.
I'm on the wrong one. I can't. The other 35. Sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Make a motion to direct staff to participate in the Oregon Trees Heritage Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those, any discussion, further, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, with a nay. Hearing none, a done. Thank you very much. Thanks for taking an interest. That didn't hurt, did it, Donna?
I was on vacation for a month.
Oh. All right. Now, we go into public hearings. And I have a script. This is, we have ZOA 2018-03 is the parking requirements in Taft Village Core in Ocean Lake Plan District. It is now 7:14 PM. The public hearing for file ZOA 2018-03 is now open. This public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend Title 17 zoning in chapters 17.45 Taft Village Core and 17.50 Ocean Lake Plan, or Plan District, to reduce or eliminate off-street parking requirements for development of those zoning districts. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter on November 20th and forwarded a recommendation as outlined in the council communication. The city council's role in this legislative process is to consider the Planning Commission's recommendation, any written or oral testimony, as well as information from staff, and make a final decision as to the ordinance amendments or new ordinances. The city council may adopt the recommendation or may take other action, including declining to make any ordinance revisions. The council must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the council wish to declare a conflict of interest in this matter? I hear none. Substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city zoning ordinance. Comments and testimonies should be directed to those, to these criteria or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. The staff will present a report and respond to any questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If council members have questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name. I already have it. I'll call for people. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will the staff please present a report?
Thank you, Mayor, councilors. At the outset, I guess I need to apologize to you because the ordinance for this hearing and for the following hearing did not show up in your packet. So, it's possible it's hard, hard to follow, but I did provide copies to you at your seat tonight. And what you may want to do is, after you hear the staff report, take any public testimony and then hold off your deliberations until a future meeting when you've had a chance to take a closer look at the pending ordinance. So, this one does relate to parking in Taft and Ocean Lake. The proposal is to eliminate the off-street parking requirement for commercial and mixed-use developments in Taft and Ocean Lake. Parking would be in on-street parking spaces, city-owned parking lots, private parking lots that might be developed, and any off-street parking that a developer might choose to provide. Also eliminated under the draft ordinance would be the existing requirements relating to reduced parking for mixed-use development and the in-lu parking fee. So, the reason we're proposing this is that the Urban Renewal Agency has spent millions of dollars on improvements, infrastructure improvements and planning in Ocean Lake and Taft, but very little redevelopment has occurred. Staff believes that one of the main deterrents for redevelopment in these two areas is the parking requirement. There's an example here. This is Ocean Lake, a lot of older buildings. Again, the city spent millions of dollars here, but it's seen virtually no redevelopment happen as a result. Example of the kinds of opportunities I think are lost because of the parking requirement, this building is a good example. It's a deteriorated building. But because the code requires when you rehabilitate a building, if you spend more than 50% of the value of the building on fixing it up, you have to bring everything into conformance, and parking is one of the things that would have to come into performance. This particular building, according to the assessor's office, has a value of $47,000. So, if you spent $23,500 or more, you'd have to come into conformance, which is probably why that building is sitting there the way it is right now, rather than being, being fixed. Similarly, we have some vacant sites in, in Ocean Lake. And given the high degree of partialization that there is in Ocean Lake, actually, the way it is in most areas of the city, there's little ability to put a economically viable use on a property and also provide the required parking. So, the changes that are proposed, and I'm sorry, there's some wordy slides here, and the reason for that is because I realized this afternoon that you didn't have the ordinances, so I wanted to put up some of the language. But in Taft, the main things that would happen would be to say that there'd be no parking, no minimum off-street parking requirement for any commercial or mixed-use building in Taft. Multi-family dwellings, duplexes, and attached single-family dwellings in the TVC zone would have one and a half parking spaces per unit. And the hearing later tonight, actually, conceivably, you could reduce that number even more based on, on what's presented there. So, you may want to consider that. And then, any other uses in Taft would just require the normal parking requirements that we have in place. The Planning Commission held a hearing on this and recommended eliminating the parking requirement for commercial uses, but keeping the parking requirement for the residential portion of mixed use. So, the, the way the ordinance is drafted, it would eliminate both, but the Planning Commission recommended just the, just for pure commercial uses and for the commercial component of mixed uses. Also, in Taft, there'd be some other changes. We'd eliminate the in-lu parking fee option. That's been on the books for 15 years. It's, it's never been used, and probably for good reasons, it's expensive. And also, we would eliminate the, any material duplicating the parking materials that apply generally in the city, and then eliminate the, what's called the structured parking, which is parking structures. The, the parking reduction that you would get if you used structured parking. Right now, we have a 10% parking reduction. But if we're eliminating the parking requirement, then there's really no need for the parking reduction. In Ocean Lake, would, the language would change to say that there's no parking requirement for any commercial or mixed-use building in the Main Street Highway overlay zone. And I should tell you, the Ocean Lake Plan District has three overlay zones within it. One along the highway called the Main Street Highway overlay zone, and then there's also interior mixed use and oceanfront overlays. So, the recommendation is, again, for the Main Street Highway, no parking requirement for commercial or mixed use. And in the other two, for the interior mixed use or oceanfront, just eliminate it for the commercial component of a mixed-use building. And again, this is, the Planning Commission wanted to keep the parking requirement for the residential portion of mixed use throughout Ocean Lake, not just the way that the ordinance is drafted right now. So, that's what I have on the parking reduction.
Any questions from council of, of staff regarding the ordinance you didn't see, but could explain to you? Counselor, I think?
What would be the negative consequences of reducing or eliminating the commercial parking?
It's possible that there would be a parking shortage. You might see parking overflowing into residential neighborhoods.
From the?
Actually, right now, in Ocean Lake, very few buildings in, in the main part of Ocean Lake provide parking anyway.
Do we have numbers on the parking lots from, to the north of Maxwell's or the south of that?
Right. We've got, there's, there are two public parking lots.
Do we, do we, as the city, know how often those are occupied, or percentage of occupy?
How often what?
Do we know how full those parking lots get?
We haven't done a, a study of it, to my knowledge. I know that the, the one on 17th tends to be fuller than the one on 15th. I think, because most people don't know that the one on 15th is there.
That has an e-charging station, too, right? The 15th Street? The 15th Street parking has a e-charging state, right?
Right.
Other questions, Counselor Hinton?
I'm, I'm concerned about the parking for the residents, and how are we going to know if it's impacting the residents? Are we going to provide parking permits for them? Are we going to paint a stripe that's a different color than yellow where they can park? And that, I mean, I, how are we going to manage this?
Again, for, for most of the areas that are affected here, there already is no parking, you know, for, for commercial uses. Really, we're looking at the future, future uses. Now, it's possible that as properties redevelop as a result of this, they might develop more intensely than they're developed right now. And you conceivably could have, you know, an increased parking demand. But as far as, you know, are we monitoring? There's no plan to. There's, I don't know how you can tell who's parking where. You know, we have vacation rentals, you know, day visitors, what have you. Whether they, where they park, we really have, have no way of, of monitoring anything. I imagine, well, I, I just don't know.
Yep?
Okay, I have a question. If, we're talking about the future, and so, Ocean Lake, Main Street, I'm not, I'm still really new about the zoning. If we eliminate the parking, but let's just say a hotel now wants to go in, are they zoned for that? It's commercial. Is that something, because if that's the future, and then we build a hotel there that is required no parking?
If it was in the, you know, in the zone, it would not be required to provide parking the way this is written now. I doubt, well, I doubt there would be any substantial hotel development because it's not oceanfront. And again, actually, except on the, the oceanfront part of Ocean Lake, but that's already largely developed with hotels or, or multi-family. Again, the high degree of partialization that we have makes land assembly pretty hard. But, you know, yeah, it could happen.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor, Gasper?
I know you said you're looking for the future, but have there been any issues that have surfaced from residents and businesses as parking currently exists? What are the major issues?
The, the main thing I've heard about parking, like in Ocean Lake, is some people are frustrated that businesspeople park on the on-street parking in front of their businesses, using, so taking up parking space that could be used by customers. Beyond that, I haven't heard negatives. You know, we do have, again, the 17th Street parking lot, 15th Street parking lot. They are, the 17th Street parking lot sometimes gets full, I believe, just, you know, I go by it. But I don't, don't see it happening all that often. I don't know to what extent people feel need to park, you know, go into the neighborhoods to park. Probably, they go down 15th a little bit, where we did some, Urban Renewal did a nice job of redoing 15th Street and putting in designated off-street parking spaces there.
So, Ogden?
To jump on Counselor Cusis, what would stop an oceanfront hotel from converting their parking lot to another building? Nothing? So, there, there runs that risk?
Yeah. And, you know, these kinds of things that can be addressed through drafting changes. Like, you could, you could say excluding commercial uses, excluding, you know, hotels or motels or what have you, or any others you feel would need to be excluded. or motels or what have you, or any others you feel would need to be excluded.
But, can you, can you just restate, when you said, since we were just given this, we would do what, and then come back again?
I'll...
You'll come, you'll...
I'll take it. The suggestion would be that since we haven't had the ordinance in front of us...
Right.
They would take public hearing, take testimony, decide whether to keep the hearing open or not.
All right.
But then, next council meeting, look at the ordinance itself, debate it, deliberate. So, that, that's why while the, just for new counselors, this is the time to get your questions answered before we start deliberating on it, because once we close the public hearing, we're not able to enter in new information unless we go through the process of opening up. So, it's a good idea to, you know, quiz staff now, and, and these are good, good questions. We just want to avoid the debate.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
I would just like to say that I'm very uncomfortable with, with closing the hearing. I know we're not there yet, but if we haven't been able to see the ordinance until now, others out there who may have an interest haven't been able to either.
So, wouldn't we get to that?
Just...
Yep, I hear you, but let's get, any other questions?
Yep. These were, I will say, these were in the packet for the December 10th meeting, so they have been out there and they are on our website.
Mr. Upchel, or Townsend, I'm sorry. Can you tell me what the parking spaces per unit was for the development by the DMV? How many spaces per unit for that one?
Talking about the, uh...
Westland.
The apartments?
Mm-hmm.
Two per unit?
It is...
Except for, except for, some, a small number of them were approved as elderly units, and that was one per bedroom, I think. So, but that's not what's being proposed here, and it's not that zone.
I'm just, as a gauge, as, as what it would be, that I, and I know, I'm just, just asking for density.
Other questions, counselors?
I just, it's more of a thought, the, the possibility of a hotel coming in without any parking is, seems unlikely to me. Is it, could you comment on that, yeah?
Again, we can, we can address that easily through creating an exception.
I had a, just a couple of questions. We've had parking requirements for, since the earth was created.
Since the beginning of time.
When did we have mixed use come into play? Because that...
It's, it's varied from place to place. We did it citywide, you know, in commercial citywide, a couple of years ago, I think. Yeah, but in Ocean, well, Taft would have been, what, 2002, 2003, something like that?
In Ocean Lake?
Ocean Lake about 2006, maybe a little bit earlier, but...
I think something, I think it was during my time, so that'd be 210 or 208 or something like that. Because I can remember the public hearings on it, the mixed use. So, so it's been quite a while. I guess that, that's the point. And I, I heard you say, so I'm, I'm just looking, again, there really hasn't been any significant development with parking...
Right.
...requirements. So, to think, you know, there might be an opportunity, and that's why this is here, is if we eliminate it, to see what happens?
Right.
Yeah, okay. So, that's the, the gist of it. Any other comments, questions? Let me then go on. This would be a time, I, for a public comment. I might point out, in our packets, we did get some written testimony on this hearing from, at least I got three individuals.
Yeah, there were some comments that were included in the packet, and then there were three more at the, at your desk tonight, I believe.
So, those are, are submitted in the record as well?
Right.
Or will be.
Some of them don't apply to this hearing, but may apply to the next one.
Right. I, I had three for this one. Then, let's see, this is Agenda Eight, so, or you wanted Nine. So, are, anybody didn't, nobody seemed to sign up for comments? Has anybody from the public wished to make comment on parking elimination in Ocean Lake and Taft-proposed ordinance? Hearing and seeing none? Uh, let's see, is there any person in the audience who did not, oh, I already asked that, is there any comments represented from public agencies? So, now would be the time where our decision is to keep the public record open, public hearing open and the record. As I cautioned you, counselors, if we close it, then we can't take new information. Sometimes, what we do is, and I look to counsel on this, but I think it's called, close the public hearing but keep the record open. That would allow individuals to submit written testimony to us prior to any decision, or we'd set a date when, when that would cut off. So, pleasure of counsel.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion...
Okay.
...to close the public testimony, but keep the record open until the next available meeting.
So, let's see, let's get a date on keeping the record open. We'd want it on, is it Monday?
Twenty eighth.
Or Wednesday, before the 28th, or when?
We, uh...
Twenty third.
The...
Wednesday.
The Wednesday before is when we publish the agenda. The staff, the staff is, provides all of their information to me so I can put it onto the agenda on the Monday, the week before, so that would be the...
Twenty third?
Well, then, it would be the 21st. If you want to do that, I would suggest that you put it to the 22nd, because the 21st is a holiday.
Oh, I see.
So, it's probably just amended to keep the record open till noon?
The 22nd.
Noon on the 22nd?
Yep. Please.
So, the suggestion would be to close the public hearing and leave the record open until the 22nd at 5:00 PM?
Okay.
And people are being encouraged to submit their comments in writing.
Yeah, until 5:00 PM, yeah.
That would be the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Counselor Hinton? Yeah, go ahead. This is the time to argue for it.
Okay, I would, I would actually like to see some change somehow, and I don't have the words for it right now, to make sure that there is parking available for the residents.
Okay, but so, we're talking about the public hearing, or closing or not, and you were, you argued it a little bit before we had the motion.
I did.
So, are you okay with this motion, or would you be arguing to vote no on this motion and come up with another one?
Um, no, I'm fine.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the table and a second to close the public hearing and keep the record open until 5 o'clock, January 22nd, and that would be written testimony on this ordinance. Is there, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none, motion passed. So, what that means is, additional information can come in until noon on the 22nd, or, excuse me, 5 o'clock on the 22nd.
Then you'll, you'll have deliberations on the 28th.
And we'll have deliberations, right. So, and you, counselors, were provided with the new ordinance, and it's got a 2019-04 number on it. Yes? Okay?
And, just as an aside, in the staff reports, they refer to different ordinance numbers, because we had 2018 ordinance numbers on them. They're now changed to 2019 ordinance numbers, so you may have to give a little thought to tracking which is which.
Not to be confused. All right. Then, let's move to the next public hearing. We have public hearing ZOA 2018-04. This also has a script. If you don't mind, bear with me. It is now 7:40 PM. The public hearing for file ZOA 2018-04 is now open. This public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend Title 17 zoning in various chapters. These amendments include several ordinances. One modifies arborist requirements when tree removal is requested, reduces off-street parking requirements for residential uses. Two, defines four flat dwellings and allows them in most residential and commercial zones. Three, defines tiny house developments, establishes standards for such developments, and allows tiny house developments in the RM multifamily residential zone, the GC general commercial zone, the RC recreational commercial zone. As a housekeeping matter, this ordinance also deletes an outdated code prohibiting, prohibition on permanent occupancy in approved recreational vehicle parks. The ordinance also includes a number of grammatical and wording changes regarding mobile home parks and recreational vehicle parks, but does not change development standards. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on the, these matters on November 20th and December 4th, and forwarded a series of recommendations as outlined in the Council of Communication. The city council's role in this legislative process is to consider the Planning Commission's recommendation, any written or oral testimony, as well as information from staff, and make a final decision as to the ordinance, amendments, or new ordinances. The city council may adopt the recommendation or may take other action, including declining, to make any ordinance revisions. The council must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the council wish to declare a conflict of interest in this matter? Hearing none, we'll move on. The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria or to other criteria that you apply, believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. The staff will present a report and respond to any questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If council members have questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and address. I've got that and we'll call. All right, staff, present their report.
Thank you, Mayor. This hearing relates to four draft ordinances you have before you. Relating to workforce housing, as the mayor mentioned, one is about tiny houses, one is about big houses, the four-flat developments, one about reducing the residential parking requirements, and one about the tree preservation plan requirements. With respect to tiny houses, I have some examples here. They come in a variety of sizes. Those that are on wheels, such as this one, can be quite narrow, eight to 12 feet wide usually, with square footage as low as 160 square feet and up to about 400 square feet. And these are just some examples of some tiny houses that, actually, this was at a tiny house builder in the Albany area. It's an interior, a lot of tiny houses have sleeping lofts, like this one, various ways to get up to them. So, and while the purpose behind all of this is for, to promote, again, workforce housing, the fact that it's a tiny house doesn't necessarily mean that it's affordable, depending on how it's developed. Like, in this particular case, this is a tiny house development near Bend. They've got a, a house of 477 square feet that's selling for $249,000. But it includes a park-like setting, and pathways and ponds, gardens, mature ponderoses, bocce courts, and cozy fire pits.
Good.
But, um...
Are you retiring? Is that where you...
(laughing) You just showed us the house you bought, didn't you?
But, again, the intent here is for, to promote affordable housing, to provide another option for the kinds of housing that can be provided in the city. The draft ordinance would allow tiny house developments in the multifamily residential RM zone, recreation commercial zone, the RC zone, the general commercial zone, GC. And the ordinance also sets standards for tiny house developments, defines tiny houses as being 400 square feet or less, not counting lofts. For a tiny, a tiny house development, again, this would be allowed in these zones, would be at least four tiny houses with a property fenced, have a side of string fence around them. It'd be allowed at a density of one tiny house per 1,200 square feet of lot area. That's the same density that we allow RV parks now, and this is the same zones where we allow RV parks. And also, apartments in multifamily dwellings in, in commercial or, or within 150 feet of commercial zones are allowed at one per 1,200 square feet after the first two. So, the density is, is not significantly different from what we already allow for, for other uses. The requirement would be one parking space per unit, the parking requirement, and then also, there is provision saying that they have to comply with all applicable Oregon building codes. The reason we're suggesting that is because right now, there is some controversy in Oregon about the applicability of building codes and what they allow and don't allow, so we just want to make sure that whatever does happen would be consistent with the, the building codes, however that ends up being played out. Now, there's some questions that have arose earlier about how you can fit four tiny houses and the required parking on a 5,000-square-foot lot, because we're saying you have to have 5,000 square feet for the, for the four units. I picked this particular tiny house, this pictured here, and actually, it's a little bit bigger, it's 480 square feet, and we say 400 square feet is, is the maximum of tiny houses. And this is 16 feet wide, it's 16 by 30, but the 16 feet is a little bit wider than, than normal. But anyway, I drew up a couple, quickly drew up a couple of plans. I'm not a developer, so I quickly drew up a couple of plans to, to show how it can be done. With this particular plan, again, here's, here's one where you, there's four of them are fit on, and they only need 10 feet between them. And actually, there may be, they may be a little tight on here, but again, most tiny houses will be narrower than this, so they would, they will fit, like, in the, in this area, they might, it might be a little bit narrow, but probably most of them would be two feet narrower, so, or, so, in any event, they would have to meet the standard of the separation. And just another example, doing the same thing, just showing how it is possible to do it, principally because you only need one parking space per unit, and you only have to meet the setbacks at the perimeter. So, the setback is five feet for a single-story house, seven and a half feet for more than one story. This is showing five feet.
I have a question. Are those vehicles to scale?
Say again?
Are those vehicles to scale? They look big.
Yeah, I drew everything to scale here.
Yeah.
Just, I...
But if it's 16 by 30...
Cut them out from building plans that are to scale, that, that actually developers use from their, you know, their, their computer drafting, and they plug them in, so, yes, they are to scale. So, um... So, we, there's also provision that you have to meet the lot coverage standards of the zones, and the R1 zone, well, when we apply the R1 standard, which we would end up doing, even though this is in these commercial zones, you're limited, for the 5,000-square-foot lot, you're limited to 17,000, or 1,750 square feet of lot coverage. With four 400-foot houses, you're at 1,600, so it wouldn't be a problem meeting that So then, turning now to four flats, big houses. It's four dwelling units in one building, yes.
Would you mind if we ask questions on that ordinance first, before you go to big houses?
No, I don't mind at all.
Because then we could kind of, are there any, any questions from council regarding the tiny house ordinance and proposals?
I just, clarification, you said it was, had to be fenced in?
Right.
Okay.
See, the same, it's the same requirement we have for RV parks, that they have to fence around them, yeah.
Other questions? Yep, oh, sorry.
Is there a way that these would not be used for VRD use?
Well, they couldn't be because VRD has to have two parking spaces, minimum of two parking spaces, so you'd have a hard time doing it and getting them, getting them on.
But if you...
Counselor?
If you put three, then you would be able to do it.
Well, you have to have at least four on a 5,000-square-foot lot.
You have to have at least four, okay.
Now, you could put four on a bigger lot.
Sure.
But, you know, and if you want to say that there can't be VRDs, that's easy to write in.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That was going to be my suggestion, that we write in no VRDs for these, because this is affordable housing. This is what we're pushing for. We don't want to make them into commercial.
You didn't want to do the Bend property?
That's kind of cute, but...
Mr. Mayor, are we, is there a way to reduce, so instead of there being four SDC charges and four hookup things and all that that's associated with it, because you're essentially doing the same thing as four stick-built homes, is there going to be, can there be, how can we make it be so that the four hookup charges isn't going to be 80 grand?
Yeah.
Because that's what it's going to cost?
I think one thing that's important after I'm gone...
Did you hear that back there?
System development, system, system development charge reform. I think that's really important. I know the Public Works Department supports that as well. Other places, including Newport, have based, changed their, the way they calculate system development charges to be based on square footage. So, that can be done. It's done in a lot of places. And there can be other, other ways if, if you want to provide a subsidy for SDCs, for developments that are truly, for workforce housing.
So, when, at what point would that be a suggestion to make to the oncoming planning director?
I've already talked to her about it, so...
Wouldn't we do planning, uh, goals and, you know, have that kind of discussion would be the answer?
She's nodding.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think that's, that's probably one of the most important undone things I'll be leaving behind.
Right, because I've talked, I mean, builders would say, hey, it's going to cost me the same as four homes, why am I going to do that?
Right.
Other questions regarding tiny homes?
$49,000, I don't know.
I just got one. And this would allow them anywhere in town, in, within those zones, right?
Within those zones, you had general commercial, recreation, commercial, and multifamily.
Staying, staying with that...
Not in single-family zones, for example.
Right. I, I think that was one of the comments we had from somebody that concerned about in their neighborhood, so to speak, but their neighborhood was a residential neighborhood, so this wouldn't apply.
Right.
Wouldn't be able to, could you give us some kind of indication as far as land availability in those zones? I mean, how, it's nice to do this, and I'm not arguing, it's not doing it, but is there open land, developable land?
Yes.
Can you name a couple of areas or just remind us? Or are we going to be tearing down something to build?
Think of Lighthouse Square. Like I say, if that was, if those vacant buildings were to be demolished, that could happen there. Immediately adjacent to that, there is a, a couple acre site, that's a possibility. But this is more directed at smaller properties. There might be some along West Devils Lake Road near the RV park. Again, you know, again, since we, allow it on 5,000 square feet, there's a lot of places, like infill, where it could happen.
So, let me propose it, because I, I don't know, but I'm, I'm remembering in Ocean Lake, the whole east side is heavy multifamily. Is, is that, Rick, is, that's RM zone?
Ocean Lake is Ocean Lake, or the east side is multifamily, yes.
Right, RM.
Right.
So, that would qualify, though there's not land undeveloped, or not much.
There are undeveloped lots in there, yeah.
Okay, so theoretically, I, I could buy an older home in there, because it's built out single-family, and put four of these on the lot. Are those lots 5,000 square feet?
Generally, yes.
Yeah, I think they're pretty big.
Thinking of, of that particular area, it's zoned RM, and almost all the development there is single-family. One of the things also we may want to think about relating to affordable housing in the future is not allowing single-family in the RM zone, because we're using up RM property for single-family. If we do that, that would make, conceivably, could make all those houses nonconforming, which would create a financing issue there. So, we might want to consider rezoning that area to single-family, since that's how it's used.
Right, I mean, that...
And we would, there would be some other areas that are zoned for single-family that we may want to rezone to multifamily to offset that loss of multifamily property.
So, theoretically, though, and I, Councilor Hoogland, to your point, I don't know what these tiny houses would sell for, you know, 400 square feet, but knowing the system development charges and everything, you know, I don't know, 100, so you're talking about four of these, 400,000 on a lot, and it's probably, you know, so it's conceivable that you could tear down and build and, and have a higher-priced footprint structure on that lot on, I'm, I'm just thinking of the multifamily Ocean Lake side, some of those smaller, single-family homes in there could, would be up for go-away, okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I was at a conference in December, and they were talking about housing, and tiny houses was one of them. What, what zoning is our community college in currently?
I think it's single-family.
Because the property around it, I don't believe the city owns, isn't it urban growth boundary?
We, well, the, the college, we own property to the east and north of it that's, that we've got for open space.
Okay, well, the skinny of the conference was the community colleges were going to get together and allocate areas to build tiny houses for students, and they could do that in Newport, and they could do it in Walport, but it, I don't know that we can do it here. And the intent was to, to build them somewhere within their facility, and they wouldn't be that expensive, like 35,000 to 45,000, and make them explicitly for student housing. So, I didn't know if we had any land in that area.
The, again, the, the land that we own, immediately adjacent to it, we got specifically for open space. I think it was deeded to us for open space. There is undeveloped land south of there that's privately owned, and there's some general commercial land privately owned that's, again, basically the other side of High School Drive that might be a good candidate.
Any other questions, tiny houses? Just a procedural question. Mr. Appicello, when we open up a, an ordinance like this and make reference to mobile home parks and whatnot, is it all fair game, or just the tiny house portion that got added into here?
Well, what we've noticed is the changes that are set forth in this ordinance. So, we sent that off to the LCD as part of the statutory requirements, what we sent off to the residents under our Measure 56 notice, or that we're making these changes. If you see something in here that's something you want to amend, just because it happens to be before you, may not be the best time, because we haven't noticed it. You do have some leeway, but it really should relate to what was noticed, so...
That, that's fine. And the only thing I noticed when I was reading through this is, again, this one under mobile home parks, where we require, back to space, storage space for boats and campers and that kind of stuff when they're doing a, a park. And that's, I, that's reminding me of what we used to have for the multifamily requirements, and that might be a good one to look at getting out of there again, but now's not the time.
If the amendment is substantially different, then DLCD will tell you have to renotice, so...
The other thing, look, I was looking through here, I'm, I'm reminded that there are some mobile home parks, so this is a question, I, I don't see that we have a certain requirement of a water meter size, depending on the number of units that go into a park?
Yeah, well, we don't, in the zoning ordinance, I don't know if the Public Works Department has a, has a standard for the, for the, it probably would be a function of the number of units that are going to be connected to it.
Okay, so, that would be, it would, wouldn't be in this ordinance, which, okay. Because I know that's one way to reduce costs, is to get a smaller meter, but the tenants...
Well, also, one thing is like for, you, you mentioned like, if it's $10,000 SDCs for each unit, if it's one meter, you have, you know, four hooked up to it, the SDCs could be decreased in part, because, through that.
Okay.
The way we do it for multifamily right now.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, are you, a number, it says A6, you're requiring there should be an onsite resident manager, like a mobile home park? Is that, am I on the right one?
I think that's under...
Is that five?
What are you looking at?
Are we on four?
Under the ordinance, under...
Are we on 2,000, are we on five or four?
It's not a change, it's just a note.
Right, but I...
Oh, the, the changes shall, must have. So, a mobile home park...
And tiny house development. So, are you requiring to have there be a manager live in this 5,000-square-foot lot?
If we have that, I'll have to take a closer look, but I don't, I don't think it would make sense to have that requirement.
Okay, John.
Is it, I, I just want, I want to make sure, it's 2019-5, right?
What page?
Five, two.
Page two.
Section four, A, A2, no, A1, no. I don't know.
I thought you said six, A6.
Yeah, this is...
Yeah, six, yes. Mobile home park shall have a, must have a resident manager.
That's mobile home park.
But is that, does that apply to this?
No, because the heading above that, back on page two, yeah, line 26, mobile home park standards.
But, but, but line 24 says tiny house.
Then when you go down to page four, line 37, it's tiny house developments, is where that comes in, so you would not be required to have a, a resident manager.
But I thought 24 was the total, the, line 24 says tiny house developments, and then, and then it goes to mobile home park standards?
No.
In application to the tiny home standards?
No, the, if your line 23 and 24 is the title of the section.
Right.
Standards for mobile home parks, recreational vehicle parks, and tiny house developments.
Right.
Then, beginning on lines 26, it's mobile home park standards, from there...
Okay.
Until you get to recreational vehicle park standards on the next page.
And then C, okay.
Part C on the next page.
I know how to read.
Now, that's good. It's good, it's good, yeah, it's good, good question. Okay, any...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We're all right at this point for tiny houses? All right, let's move on then to four flat dwellings.
Okay, on tiny houses, the planning commission recommended adoption.
As, as is, yeah.
I have one more question.
Four flat dwellings...
Oh, we have one more question.
The tiny houses, they have to be on some sort of foundation, can they be on wheels? I know some of them are built on trailers.
There are different kinds, there's tiny house on wheels and tiny house on foundation.
We're making no difference.
We're not differentiating between them.
Can you...
Right now, we, we don't have, unlike a lot of places, we don't have a minimum house size in our residential zones. So, if someone wanted to build a tiny house on a standard lot, they can now, but it would have to be on a foundation. But this is for tiny house development and would not require that they be on foundation, would be allowed at a higher density in these particular zones.
That would bring up another question, to where if they're on wheels, they could come and go, kind of, they can move.
Right.
So, if we're making four on a lot, and someone decides to move, then there's only three on that lot. Do they have to hurry up and put another one on? Are they good? If it's mobile, is it not a mobile home technically?
Well, what we've got, we, yeah, I mean, you would end up with one leaving, and hopefully one, another one would come in. You know, we, we allow RV parks at the same density, and, you know, sometimes the, the sites are empty, sometimes they're not. I, I understand what you're saying.
But that again...
Could end up creating a nonconformity.
What, what's, they wouldn't, they would not own the land below them?
Right.
And then, and then you don't define loft, so what would that, how would you define that?
Well, it would just be renting a space, basically.
But I mean, above the standard space, I mean, now you have a, a 20-foot-tall second, you know, second story, if you will, if it's built onsite and not being pulled behind.
That could happen, sure.
Right, so, I just...
Okay.
So...
If it's more than one...
Because it's not included in the square footage.
If it's more than one, yeah, it's 400-square-foot limitation, if it's more than one story, the setbacks would increase too, so. But as a practical matter, you know, a, a, a big tiny house is contradictory.
Well, but that is...
But it's not included in the 400-square-foot, so that's what I'm saying. If you're going to maximize the sale of it, you're going to say, sure, it's 400 square feet and this loft of another 100 square, you know what I mean?
I suppose it could happen.
Sure.
I, yeah, I don't...
Yes.
Okay, we talk about a tiny house, right? Because we, do we define what a tiny house is versus a trailer? I mean, I know we have mobile parks, but is it, because when you look at a tiny house, and then you look at a travel trailer, would that be defined as tiny house? How, how are we defining the difference since they're on wheels?
Good question. We can, we can do some, usually a tiny house on wheels is built of wood, not built to manufactured or RV standards.
And I think part of that is just clarity on it, because we know that people will push things, so to, as, you know, so if we clarify what we mean by a, define it, we need to define it versus not a travel trailer.
Right.
It's my Coleman home.
I'm telling you, it's...
I agree with you.
I, you know, because I'm, it's cheaper to buy a travel trailer than it's a tiny home.
But you can already have a travel trailer on an RV park now.
Right, but, you know, here I only have to have four, so...
Same density, same density, so...
Yeah.
Okay. All right, ready to move on to big houses?
Okay. These are four flats, four dwelling units in one building, designed to look like a, one big house. The proposed ordinance would allow a four-flat development on 10,000-square-feet lot. The proposed ordinance would allow a four-flat development on 10,000 square feet lot, which also could be two, 5,000 square foot lots next to each other, which could be combined to one 10,000 square foot lot. And what, they would allow these zones in the R1, R1RE, VR, the vacation rental zone. R1RE is the R1 Roads End Zone, the vacation rental zone, the recreation, or the multifamily residential, the recreation commercial, general commercial, and Taff Village Core and Ocean Lake Plan districts. As written, the unit types would be limited to studios, one and two-bedroom units. And as written also, would be limited to two stories and require a single entrance to a common hall. Several photos of examples, they don't, most of them don't meet the standard as written. And actually, the planning commission, after, after their hearing, recommended some changes to not require the single entrance, to allow taller buildings, and also to allow up to three bedrooms. So, studios, one, two, or three-bedroom units. So, this is one that does, happens to meet the standard of only one entrance. And this is another one that also does. So, you can see they look, tend to look like big houses. This one, there's four entrances. There's two on each side. You can see the central area in the back connecting them. This has, actually has four entrances, though you only see two. There's two at the basement level as well there. This has four. This one has one apparent entrance, although really there are more. This house actually has a daylight basement, which is a unit. And then, there's also a habitable attic with dormers. So, this has three units in it. And this one, you can see a little more apparently that this has a daylight basement with a, an entrance and then two main floors of habitable space and then a habitable attic, again with dormers. One of the comment letters you got is actually from the developer of these two, these last two houses recommending that the daylight basement and the habitable attic be allowed with, with dormers. So, you get, get more space in it rather than the limitation to two units, or to two stories as it's drafted. The planning commission recommended allowing a number of stories up to the maximum height in the zone to allow three-bedroom units and then also to not allow them in the R1RE, the Roads End Zone. The justification for that, as I understood it, was that we just did zoning in Roads End a little over a year ago and some of the members expressed concern that it was too soon to make any changes on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
What's, what about the conversion of homes to this standard?
That would be allowed.
So, then you could have four times the amount of vacation rentals in the same density?
Well, no. I think it's, I think it's, well, I don't.
How would you split, how, if the house was split up to four? If it's basement, daylight, attic, and with adequate hallway placement, doing exactly that?
Well, remember that in Roads End, for example, we have a cap of 90 VRDs and we're at about 200. In the R1 zone, we have a cap of 194 and we're there with a waiting list of 11.
Sure.
And in other zones, we only allow them as accessory, except in commercial zones. Yeah, in commercial, maybe you could do it, but again, it's a draft thing. If you don't want them, draft it in. That's easy, that's very easy to do. The, you could run into the requirement again of parking, because the way we've, the way this is set up, again, what we're trying to promote here is affordable housing. So, the proposal is that there only be one parking space required per unit. Again, for vacation rentals, you have to have at least two.
Per building or per?
At least one per bedroom with a minimum of two. So, if you had a three-bedroom flat, you'd have to have three parking spaces. On a 10,000 square foot lot, you start getting into real issues there. And again, if you're, if you're concerned about these being used as vacation rentals, it's easy to say they can't be. Same thing we do right now for accessory dwelling units.
Right.
Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me a minute. Mr. Chandler, do you want to?
He answered it.
Okay.
He answered it.
Yes.
I was just wondering why, if we're talking about workforce housing, would we put them in a VR zone?
So that if people wanted to build them there, they could. We're saying they could build them virtually anywhere in the city. The intent is that the option be out there. If it's built in the VR zone and if you said they couldn't be vacation rentals, then they wouldn't be.
But if it's in a VR zone, it could be a vacation rental.
If you said they can't be, then they can't be.
Okay. That would be a concern.
So, that could be defined.
Again, the standard is that they're designed to resemble a single-family dwelling, 10,000 square foot minimum lot size, four off-street parking, have to meet the underlying setback and lot coverage standards. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, mainly, we wanted to go into, basically, anywhere that a house is allowed, we wanted to allow a four-flat dwelling.
I would just say that, thank you, that these, even though they look like, you know, one large house, they're actually multifamily. So, I would rather see them, I mean, later on, we could add them to R1 and R1RE if, if we needed to, but to start out, I would take those out because they are multifamily. It changes the makeup of those neighborhoods. So, I would like to see that.
What we're trying to do is provide just another housing option.
It's a multifamily house.
Workforce housing.
It's a multifamily house.
Okay.
Does the application for vacation rental go with a house? Or if I have an, if I have a house that has.
You can't transfer.
Could I get another one on the same house, being the owner?
Well, no. Well, yes and no. If, like say, it was in the R1 zone.
And I have a VR perm and I have a.
If it's in the R1 zone, you have a, you have a VRD license, but the license isn't transferable. The land use approval is for the specific building that's there. You tear it down and build something else or modify it, you're back at the back of the line.
So, a modification to a four-flat would prevent me from obtaining three more licenses?
Yeah, well, especially in residential zone, you can only have one license. So, you can't have four.
But in a VR zone, that wouldn't apply?
VR zone, yeah, or in a commercial zone, yes.
Or a commercial.
But again, once again, if.
I understand what you're saying.
It's about affordable housing and it's easy to say you can't have a VRD in them.
Other, other questions from councilors? I would, and you mentioned it, Mr. Townsend, I appreciated, is it Garland Woodson, Woodsons?
Right, he's the developer.
I thought wrote a nice and helpful, for me anyway, his, he was very, he was a well-written, constructive evaluation of our original and looks like made, the planning commission also took it under consideration and made some of the suggested changes. So, I thought it was well done.
Yeah, it was very thoughtful.
Yes, very well done.
So, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It says, so as drafted, we have these, these limitations, which basically the planning commission recommended doing away with it, not having, not limiting to two stories, not limiting to a single entrance, and to allow three bedrooms as well as studios, one and two bedrooms.
So, if I can, when it says no, do away with two stories, but it's still, we have a height limitation.
Still have a height limitation, yeah.
So, that's all it.
In most residential zones, it's 35 feet and Roads End is 30 feet.
All right. Okay. And any other questions, thoughts, before we move to the next?
Yes.
Okay.
What is, if you had a house that you're renting out, the basement and the two stories, what's the difference that exists now to that, to a four-story four-flat? Being the garage, the first, second floor, and the attic?
I'm not sure I understand your question. You've got two units now.
What's the difference? No, 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 I'm just saying, what's the difference if you had a multi-story house that you're renting out the bottom half and the upper half? There's no difference to that, to a four-flat that way?
Right, if you're on like on a 5,000 square foot lot or something, right, yeah. And actually, right now, on 10,000 square feet of space, you can have a main dwelling, you have two main dwellings and two accessory dwelling units. So, you can have four units on that, on that 10,000 square feet. This is exactly what would be allowed, is just four units in one building instead of four units in two or four buildings. And the idea behind that is generally it's cheaper to build one building than it is to build two or four buildings, whatever. So, so this isn't allowing any more units than are allowed now.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes.
One thing to just consider is Richard talked about the look of these, the intent of the big house and how it differentiates itself from what Councilor Hoagland just described, is it's meant to look like a single house. That was the original reason why the staff put in that it has to have one entrance and that all four dwellings come into one entrance, is as though that it would maintain the look of a single-family dwelling. The farther away you get from those concepts, the more then it just looks like a multifamily, regular multifamily dwelling.
Agreed. Okay, shall we move on to the one on off-street parking?
Right, okay. So, another ordinance would reduce off-street parking requirements for residential development. So, for a single-family dwelling of less than 700 square feet, or 700 square feet or less, it would require one space. Our standard right now is two parking spaces per unit regardless of size. This would change that to, if it's 700 square feet, it's one parking space. Between 700 and 1,000, it's 1.5 spaces per unit and you round up. And then, well, actually, yeah, and then for greater than 1,000 square feet, it's two spaces. Then, for multiple families, one parking space per unit. Mobile home park, one parking space per unit. And then, we would eliminate the elderly housing unit standard because there's no need for it when we've already reduced it to one if you adopt this. So, this is, and the planning commission recommended adopting this proposal. I mentioned earlier in the other hearing that there may be some inconsistencies between the two, reducing the, for the residential part of mixed use, who may want to consider going with this standard rather than what's in there. So, that's what I have on the parking reduction.
All right, this one was the shortest of the four. Any questions regarding these proposed parking changes?
This is to encourage development, correct?
Right, to reduce the cost of development with a presumption that gets passed on to renters or others.
I'm just, I'm just not a fan of reducing like apartment complexes parking at all, seeing how difficult it is in the, you know, in the more recently built developments, what a problem those residents have already.
You know, I've, actually, I meant to go out late last night or very early this morning and actually check and see what the situation is. Last month, I went and cruised around a lot of apartment complexes late at night. And. Well, you know, actually, what I was going to do, if I did it last night, I actually was going to call the police chief and say, I'm going to be lurking around apartments and you may want to let your people know that, what's going on. I was going to take a city car so it wouldn't be quite so scary. But I think it would be good to go look and see what, what the result is now, what the situation is now. But I said, I went and looked at six or seven back in December, early December, and there was a surprising amount of empty spaces in the ones that I looked at. So, I would like to do a more complete look and just see what it is. I know that some places, some apartment complexes, even though we require two spaces, only allow you to have one car. If you want to have a second car, you pay more, pay a higher rent to have a second car there.
So, there's, right, there's that also. So, it's, yes, we built it, but you're going to have to pay for it. And then, is there, is there the actual two spaces per, is the other thing too? I would.
Almost. The one you're talking about, they have, again, some elderly housing units there nominally, they're supposed to. And so, that has a reduced parking requirement.
So, again, a procedural question, because I think that's a, an important provision, especially in a multifamily. The, the units that have new buildings that have been built that required one, either one and a half or two spaces per unit, how, how full those parking lots are? Since through our recent council training, we are instructed not to go do our own research. That means we're relying on you to research. So.
I'll go take a look.
So, that means we would need to keep the record open, again, simply for, for that, to get more information. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Does, does this totally eliminate like guest parking? Is that like a fantasy?
Well, again, what we're setting is a minimum.
Right.
So, yeah, there would not be a requirement of guest parking. Certainly, if someone wants to provide more parking than what we're requiring, they can. I was talking with someone today who mentioned that a substantial number of people in the city don't have cars. Even though we're not a transit-friendly community, there are a lot of people who don't have cars at all, who are living in apartment complexes and get around how they get around. I don't know if it was with friends or walking or whatever, but.
Five different tactics.
Again, it's a minimum, not a maximum. So, developers, if they feel the need to, or if they want to accommodate their residents better, they can always provide more parking.
So, it's a choice. It's their choice.
Well, when you're doing your research, Richard, could you look at the ones that were built over there by the DMV?
That's what.
I know there's not enough parking.
No, and just so you know, that in the homes that were built there before the apartments, there was limited parking as it was, except for the vacant lots there. But to go visit anybody, there's not even off-road, I mean, you have to park like three blocks away and walk in to see anybody there. Please just visit that one.
That's a fact.
It is a fact, yeah.
Okay, any other questions on parking? Lot of asphalt. Anyway.
Trees.
Oh, trees, let's do, we had trees earlier. But go ahead.
So, that's a tree. Actually, this might be a heritage tree candidate. It's about five feet in diameter up in the villages. So, we have some pretty strict tree protection requirements in our ordinance. This is a draft ordinance to allow partial relaxing of some of those. requirements. The draft ordinance would allow the planning director, in coordination or consultation with the city engineer, to waive some or all of the tree protection plan requirements, not pre-tree protection, but the plan requirements, for workforce housing developments. And, uh, workforce housing developments would have to be designated as such by the city manager, and would have to be at least fifty percent of affordable units as defined by the city council. Uh, and then the Planning Commission recommended adopting and recommended further that the council formally adopt the definition of affordability of what is workforce housing. We haven't done that, and recommend that we do that so we know what it would be. Now, um, uh, the requirements for a plan right now are, uh, you have to produce a document showing the location, size and species of all trees on the property, a topographical survey, or areas with topography on it, an arborist report, uh, specifying, uh, the status of all large trees, their health and condition, species, diameter, height and age. I don't know how you could do age, actually, that would be a tough one. And then a, a replacement plan and a protection plan for preserved trees. And we've already had one situation where we had what was going to be an affordable housing development, a cottage cluster, that the, uh, developer abandoned because of the arborist report requirement, because basically, he was gonna, the, the property was small enough, he was just gonna take all the trees off of it anyway. But he would have to pay a few thousand dollars for the arborist report, and so he'd be, ended up doing just normal single-family, 'cause he didn't have to go jump through that hoop. So, uh, what this does, it would just allow, planning director, again, in consultation with the city engineer, for properties that are designated specifically for workforce housing to waive some or all of these requirements. That would be, it'd just have to be on a case-by-case basis and what's, what's appropriate. Now, obviously, there, it's, uh, uh, there would be judgment calls, and that's what planning director and city engineer get paid to, to do, to make judgments, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So who would label the land workforce housing? Land? How would the land get labeled workforce?
The city manager would determine it, where at least fifty percent of the units in the, in the proposed development would be designated for, uh, workforce housing.
To that determination of what council would say?
Yeah, and it can, it could be maintained that way through, there's various provisions about transferability and recapture of profit or whatever, so to make sure they remain affordable housing.
Then they would still need an arborist to come in to assess the trees?
Maybe.
Again, this is, this would allow the possibility of not requiring that.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor?
I, um, I'm just wondering if you considered some type of incentive for leaving some trees? I understand the need to, you know, clear the space to build and, and all of that, but I also understand that trees are valuable for a lot of different reasons, and-
And that, that's why we have the tree protection programs that we have, existing in our ordinance now. If we need, um, incentives for tree protection, I'm sure it's a great idea. Again, what we're trying to do is reduce the front-end costs on this.
So, my other suggestion is, would the city take on some of the cost or have an arborist on a retainer or something to actually assist with the workforce and affordable housing properties?
It's possible, if you wanna, you know, the, through the budget process, or you wanna, uh, provide for that, that subsidy, there's certainly no reason why that couldn't happen.
If, if I could, um, following up on Counselor Henson's question, by, this is just about, so it's, my question is, this is, would allow a judgment call by planning director to void, exempt the plan, the arborist plan, or this, this-
Some, some are all of these items in the plan?
It, it does not, and that's where, it does not say that all the trees would be taken down, because the director may say, "Fine, no arborist, but since we know the land, we want X or something." Is that, I mean, am I getting, reading this, that the director is stepping in as, quote, "the arborist," the unofficial arborist, and making-
Not so much as the arborist, but just saying, like you say, there could be a, uh, basically saying, "Instead of having to do a protection plan, we're gonna say, 'You protect those trees.'"
Right.
No plan needed, just those are gonna be protected.
Right.
Or it can, it could say, "If we're gonna protect trees, here's how you protect them, you know, tie a ribbon around them so that when they come in to clear, they don't get cut," and that kind of thing, so.
So it, it is not a, a, a license to clear cut?
Right.
You still go through the steps, just trying to avoid the, I think, expense of the arborist?
Right.
Counselor?
I, I fear that, because we're not, you are not an arborist, they say, "Sure, these five big trees should be saved out of this stand of trees." And then, you, they get removed to develop, and then because the rest of the, them are gone, then those trees lose their strength, and then they fall, because you don't know, whatever it is, whatever it is, you know, whatever tree data there is, right? So I fear that, because you say, "Okay, we can keep these," and then those fall over, and we, the city, said, "Oh, we're gonna keep these," and then they fall over and we're responsible.
You mean, like, liable for the-
Right.
Somebody getting hurt by the trees falling?
Right, right. The ones that remain, that we wanted to keep, are somehow not able to, to live, being the only ones there.
You know, people cut trees for developments all the time, and yeah, sometimes they fall, like at the hospital site, they said they're gonna protect some, you know, leave up some trees, but we had those big windstorm and a few trees came down.
That's right, exactly.
It happens. I don't think there's a substantial liability for us. We're not saying you can keep those trees 'cause they're, 'cause they're strong and they'll survive and everything's perfectly safe.
Sure.
You know, it's just, we're saying, basically, we always say, "Keep as many trees as you can."
Sure.
Any-
Sometimes they come down, yeah.
Sure.
Any questions, council, councilors from this side?
Oh.
Yep?
I have one more.
Okay.
I would like to see not fifty percent, but a higher number.
You'd like to see what?
A higher percentage.
Affordable workforce-
Right.
Units in order to have this?
Correct.
Okay? That's a thought. Lost my train of thought.
Sorry.
Nope, I guess what I'm, I'm, my question is, um, you know, if we went through with this, and, uh, actually, the Planning Commission's recommendation is to go through with it, other than define what affordable and workforce is, correct?
Right.
Why, why have it at all? It, it raises the question for me, is it's, it, it seems that we're coming to a conclusion that the cost outweighs the benefit. And why would we then require it for, um-
I don't know that we're really reaching that conclusion. I think it's more saying, there is a cost here, and the benefit of affordable housing may be sufficient that we wanna relax it, relax that requirement, we can-
Okay, so-
-have a greater benefit coming.
I'll go with that. Then I'd turn it the other way and say, "Why should I, since I'm in the income level of affordable and workforce, that I should live in a development that doesn't have the same tree environmental sensitivity as those rich people do?"
So, 'cause, so you have a place to live.
Okay. Now, so I, you know, I'm really questioning, um, you know, the, the tree ordinance, I readily agree, was very onerous. We've trimmed it over the years, and I think this is another one of realization. You know, I, I don't know where the, the land, the big subdivision land is available that, that having an arborist or not having an arborist would impact, would, would be my first thought, um, other than a little bit off, uh, West Devils Lake, in there, that's, I think, multifamily zoned, um, and it's been cut once anyway, but where, I, I guess what I'm wondering is, where's the next, um, twenty-unit, twenty-lot subdivision inside the city?
There are places that, that, uh, are not developed, that could develop. There's actually one off of West Devils Lake Road near the, uh, LDS Church. There's one by the ambulance facility.
Okay.
There's one up by that water tower that's up there, another one. There are, there are several places now. There aren't a lot of big areas that haven't, that haven't developed, other than what we own. But, uh, you know, inside the urban growth boundary, there are quite a lot of areas that could be developed, and if they're annexed in and, and service provided, there's no reason why they, uh, they couldn't be developed.
Okay. Writing notes for the next time we do deliberation. Just looking for information. You're gonna get us some, do we need any additional information on the tree ordinance? Do you think? I guess it all comes under one public hearing anyway, so.
If we're linking this to workforce and affordable housing, I think we need to define those.
Yeah. That, that, yeah. There's some, uh, information in the Economic Opportunities Analysis and Housing Needs Analysis, April seventeen.
Right.
You might, if you could, Richard, maybe send out that information, um-
Mr. Mayor, I believe you all received a copy of that today.
Oh, did it? Okay, thank you.
We did receive that.
Alright, so that, that would be out?
I would, on that, though, I would like to see it used Lincoln City's, uh, median income versus the county, 'cause Newport's higher than Lincoln City as far as the median.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Um, I'm just wondering, do we have to ask the question, um, about the decision point for, um, for this list that we? I don't know our new planning director, I don't know, do you appreciate trees? I mean, do we even have to ask? No, I'm, it, it sounds silly, but it's a serious question.
What's the question?
Whether or not the decision-maker is, um, understanding the value of trees and knowing which ones are just nuisance trees. I mean, I, I'm asking a serious question. It is, sounds silly, but-
One of the, and I, it is a good question, but I would caution council, is we don't make policy on individuals, so-
Exactly.
-once you go to a title, and, that's why it's a good question. So, um, and, and ultimately, you know, same thing with city manager, you know, it bumps around, and I would envision, you know, workforce, but, um, you know-
That's my reason, thank you.
Before you go, I mean, so one of the reasons we, it's drafted so that it's the planning director's decision in consultation with the city engineer, so it's more than one person making the decision, so that, um, that concern of the, you know, the, uh, rabid one way or the other would be offset.
Well, and, and the city manager is in the flow as well, so that way, we don't have to embarrass Lindsay that she's got a wood-burning fireplace, right? And, you know, she loves to cut up trees or anything, you know, is that?
I enjoy campfires at the beach, however, uh, the city of Gig Harbor had a very, um, laborious landscaping and tree ordinance that I come from. You guys are very relaxed compared to what I'm used to enforcing at this point, um, but I think that, uh, this is a really good first step in being able to address some of the workforce housing needs, because arborists can become, being professional and certified and have to maintain their, um, information up to date. And if there aren't any located directly in Lincoln County, that can become a burden for development.
And that's what it's been, yeah. Any questions? Great, go ahead.
Do we have a ballpark about what this costs people now?
Ballpark what?
Of what this costs for somebody now?
It's totally, totally depends on the size of the development. When I was talking about the cottage housing development, it was pretty small, and the arborist was going to be, I think, between three and five thousand dollars, just for a small, small property. You know, as you get up to, uh, larger properties, you know, you get a lot of trees and you're, and it's, it can be quite a burden.
Alright. Thank you both. Now would be the time for us for, uh, public comment, and, uh, Marie McFarland, uh, signed up. You just give us your name, and, you know, which one of these four do you really wanna go after?
Well, good evening, uh, Mayor and council members. I am Marie McFarland, and I live at twenty-sixty-two Northwest Fiftieth Street here in Lincoln City. I am on the Planning Commission, however, I am not here tonight as a Planning Commission member, I'm here as an individual citizen with concerns about the four, four-flat dwellings and tiny homes. Uh, I believe there are some issues that haven't been addressed, although I've heard some of the questions tonight that you've been asking, and, and see you're kind of on the same page as I am. And I believe these things need to be considered and addressed before you pass these ordinances. First of all, I want to say that I truly believe we do have a housing crisis in Lincoln City. And to that end, I commend you for tackling this problem, because it is something that needs to be tackled. However, I have not been able to find a definition of workforce housing and affordable housing as far as monetary. What kind of a cap is it? Are we talking fifty thousand, twenty thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand? As Richard was showing a picture of a two-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-dollar tiny home, that doesn't meet the definition to me of affordable or workforce, not in Lincoln City. So regarding the housing issue, has there been some thought about both workforce housing being separated from affordable and having affordable housing, but also dedicating potentially city land to workforce housing? And then, along with that, something we didn't speak of, that I'm concerned about, is how do you keep it affordable, or how do you keep it workforce? Because how do you designate who's coming in to buy that house or to rent that house? And if they're purchasing it and it's, quote, "Affordable now," if they go to sell it in five years, how does it remain affordable? None of that was discussed, or at least I've not been able to find discussion on that. So I have some concerns about that. I know that in many, many cities across the country, whether it's Detroit, it's down in Arizona, workforce housing at the tune of twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars for a little tiny home has been available, and the cities have gone in and helped with this. There are many, many places in the country that have tackled this problem and have overcome it. I think that from a city, we should not always try and reinvent the wheel, but try to learn from other towns and possibly borrow some ideas, and possibly make those types of, of commitments to, to look into that. And I don't know if that's been done, I don't know that it has. Secondly, the criteria for determining this, if there is some, I don't know where it is. How do you determine what's a workforce house? How do you determine what's an affordable house? How do you determine if any of these are the four-flat dwellings? How do you determine if any of these are the four flat dwellings? If they're workforce, multifamily, what it is? So I think there's a lot of that information yet that still is out there that needs to be defined. As for the Planning Commission recommendations, I highly support the findings as far as they went. That includes exempting single-family residential Roads End R1RE zone. Roads End, as you know, has recently been through a rather traumatic process regarding zoning, and not looking forward to going through that battle again. That's a very, very sensitive issue in the Roads End area, which, by the way, I live at the edge of Roads End. However, the potential of these four flat dwellings potentially, possibly becoming a VRD or a mini VRD, not to mention problems regarding traffic. We don't have available traffic, public transportation. We have a bigger problem even in the Roads End area with, if there becomes a subducted zone break with the tsunami, the hazards that we face down there. These are things that make Roads End a little less desirable for having four flat dwellings, for instance, or even tiny homes. That's primarily because of density. We do not, we have one road in, one road out, so it's a problem. Thirdly, is there a plan to identify percent of the four flat dwellings as workforce only? Or are they, is it, we mentioned 50%? Is it 50%? Are these four flat or family dwellings, are they going to be 100% workforce? Are they going to just be affordable? What are they going to be? So that's a concern I have. Along with it was mentioned, Mr. Hoagland mentioned the fact that with the VRDs, could they be made into four flat homes? I highly recommend having large VRDs across the street from me and problems that I face all the time. It would be very much a concern that that suddenly was turned into a four-flat home, and it's big enough it could be that. So I highly would recommend against that, and would do what I could to help discourage that, the VRDs being turned into four-flat dwellings. The, as I mentioned earlier, to basically wrap it up, is I commend the city council for addressing this very large issue regarding affordable and workforce housing, but I highly recommend that the committee, a committee, be established to explore the issues that I've raised, along with others that have been raised here tonight, so we don't keep making mistakes and having to go through something again and again. I'm one of those believers in the fact of insanity is repeating the same mistakes over and over, expecting a different outlet, or a different outcome, and I'd like to see that this, the problem with affordable housing, the problem with workforce house, really be tackled and fixed, because we definitely need it in the city. So, I thank you.
All right, thank you for coming forward. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I just have one. You mentioned that, about establishing a committee, and what would this committee?
To look at, to identify, basically define what affordable is. So what is an affordable? What is workforce? How would these be kept affordable? How would they be kept workforce? Because I don't think we have the ability to say, you can only sell these, for instance, if they're homes for sale, you can only sell these to people who live in Lincoln City. If we could, or designate, only people can live, that live in Lincoln City, that work in Lincoln City, can live in this. I think that that's an issue that needs to be resolved, and I don't think we can do that legally.
Any other questions? Yes.
You had stated you, that you're in Roads End. There are big VRDs right now, that you would not want them turned into a four-flat. Can you tell me kind of why, versus a VRD versus a full-time resident?
Well, even with the VRDs, right now, we have a lot of problems. I have VR, I'm only one of two people living on my street that's a home, I mean, that's owned and someone living there. The rest are all VRDs.
Correct.
And they, people come and go constantly, there's a lot of extra traffic, we have a lot of things going on, and I just, the density and the problem of turning these homes...
Let me help you get, the question really is, a transient tenant is in the VRD.
Correct.
A four-big house would be a long-term renter.
Right.
So significant difference. So the question really is, why wouldn't you want long-term renter? I think, correct?
Why would you not want full-time residents versus in and outs?
I'm just concerned right now that some of these, that the potential of these, these four flats or these VRDs, right now, there are, there are restrictions on how many can be here, and, you know, the drop-down as, as we go through the time with our zoning, as to how many VRDs we can have, and the potential of some of these VRDs becoming like a mini VRD, and that it gets around the rules that have been established for zoning. So I'm just concerned about that, that conversion.
I hear one of the suggestions, I might remind you, came up, was you can always write in no VRDs in these.
Yes, yes.
So I, I would say, I think the councilor's trying to bring up, wouldn't you welcome long-term renters in your neighborhood?
It's something that should be explored. I agree that it should be explored, but right now, I don't want to, I personally don't want to see zoning changed, where we have more things come in to it that would change it, that would upset that balance, that what we're trying to get Roads End area back to, which is single-family dwelling, and get it back to a residential area, because we have an awful lot of transits in there now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else that wants to speak on any of these four ordinances? Counselor, I would point out, some of the questions that were brought up really aren't that difficult, and they're done all day. You can easily define, and we already have, in fact, defined affordable. Our government, federal, when they work and are open, have a definition for affordable. It's income-driven. Workforce, in essence, you could steal or modify the land trust, requirements on the land trust that we've been supported, and I think it goes up to 140% median income. So there's ways you can do, and you put deed restrictions and all this kind of stuff. So I, it can, so the point is, we can define, I'll put it down, I think it's a good idea, but the, I don't know, you need a committee, is where I'm going. So at this point, hearing none, no other points, residents wanting to talk, are there any other public agencies that want to say anything? Given no further comments, I'd come to the conclusion here of public hearing and the record, same kind of issue, we're, all four of these are under one public hearing. Well, we've got, we could leave it open, because we're still asking for parking, on the parking one, and we could do similar, just have them all open the record again till noon. I don't know why I keep saying noon, 5:00 on the 22nd. So we'd have written information, if that's, give Mr. Townsend time to drive, do his night driving, and... With that, you know, just for consideration, so I'd take a motion then to, how to handle the public hearing and record? Any motion? You can...
For five, six?
For all, all four of these?
Didn't I do one of them?
The Ocean Lake Taft is separate.
Oh.
So then we have, what do we have? We have tiny houses, four-flat dwellings, parking, and tree ordinance.
So you'd be looking to close the public hearing and leave the record open until 5:00 Tuesday?
The 22nd.
22nd.
Of January.
And then you would continue with deliberations at your next scheduled meeting.
You like that motion?
I do.
All right.
Can we say so moved?
So you go to, you go to take credit for this one?
I don't know, I could rule that away.
Mr. Parsons here, can he have credit?
All right, all right, go ahead.
You're so moved. And how about a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Getting everybody at the act tonight, thank you. All right, so we'll get more information and deliberate at our next council meeting on the 28th.
Can we take a vote?
Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry, I just took it for granted. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none, thank you. All right, let's move on to resolutions. Resolution number 201904, a resolution adopting the supplemental budget of the city of Lincoln City, Oregon, for the fiscal year 2018, 2019, as approved by the city council.
Actually, I believe we have a public hearing before we do the resolution.
Oh, do? You were exactly right. I am, I am sorry. We have a public hearing. We have a public hearing, and we'll open the public hearing at 9:01. This is a public hearing to hear about the supplemental budget of the city of Lincoln City, as proposed.
Good evening. This will be just as interesting as the past topic, I'm sure. We have a supplemental budget request. It's primarily related to the bonds that we recently sold and construction of the PD building. Now that we have a firm price on the PD building, and we know what we actually get from the bonds, we've got the numbers put together, so we need to actually establish or create spending authority for that. So that's what most of these items on the supplemental budget is related to, and the dollar amounts are large enough that it does require a public hearing, so it was noticed and we do that. So, the first request is actually to establish a police building construction fund. That helps us, it just, it just makes it easier to record the use of all the bond proceeds, because the bond proceeds go in that fund, and then it all gets spent on building the PD building, and when you're all done, it zeros out. The maximum price for the PD building that was established back in November by the city council was $12,600,000. Of that amount, $333,000 has already been spent in the prior fiscal year, so that leaves a balance of $12,266,951 that we need spending authority for. So that would be the capital outlay that we would establish in the PD building construction fund. So this amount is funded by three items. The first item is the bond proceeds, which is about $11 million. We'll fund the majority of that. And then the proposed funding for the remainder is a $339,000 transfer from the facilities capital fund, and a $927,000 transfer from the general fund. So that would get all the money into the PD building construction fund that we would need to build it. So that's the first item. Second item, the facilities capital fund, in order to transfer money over there, we would have to create a transfer out. We do currently have in our adopted budget $150,000 in this fund for police building, and it's in capital outlay, so we would take it out of capital outlay, put it into transfers out, and then use, the remaining amount would come out of capital contingency. The other item that we need to create in the facilities capital fund is a debt service appropriation, because the first bond payment will be due in April of 2019, and that amount is $614,410. We would take that out of the capital contingency and put that into the debt service line. Once those two changes are made, we would have an $82,000 capital contingency left in this fund, budgeted contingency. It should be higher than that, because revenues are looking very strong compared to budget, so I expect it to be better than that, but... Okay, the third fund is the general fund, and this is to transfer $927,000 to the police building fund. This is funded primarily, $700,000 of this is actually funded from having a higher beginning fund balance than what we had budgeted for, so that amount doesn't come, we don't need to take that amount out of the contingency. It actually is an increase in the beginning fund balance, so that was really, really, really helpful in funding this project. The other $227,000 would come out of the general fund contingency, and that's the amount that's related to, all of the items I've talked about so far have been related to the PD building and bond. The remainder, one other request is to transfer $40,000 from the general fund to the demolition and repair fund, just to increase the amount that's available in that fund, and that would be $40,000 that we would take out of the general fund contingency and put into the demolition and repair fund, which currently has $10,000 of appropriated spending. So that would change it to $50,000 that would be available in that fund if this resolution was passed. There's a lot of ins and outs in there.
Well, fortunately, it's a staff report, you know, it's got a...
I hope it was helpful.
Those who are following along, you know, we have the benefit of the actual report, so.
Yeah.
Questions? Counsel, I was looking over some of the stuff, it seems that we went over these when we were talking about the bonds and where the extra money would come from, and they seem, they're matching up.
Yeah, we've tried to keep council appraised and kind of planned for it ahead of time, so fortunately, it's going according to plan.
Yeah, on the police building, yeah. And I was looking at the dates, I can't remember if the new councilors were involved in any of that police funding, police building funding?
We were in the audience.
You were in the audience? Okay, yeah. Or on the budget committee when we, great. If I can, then, just a quick ask for public comment? Anybody that has questions regarding these suggested transfers of funds? Seeing none, then take a motion to close the public hearing and close the record?
I'll move that we close the public hearing.
And the record?
And the record.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing and the record? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? So moved? Discussion then, any about these budget items? Pretty cut and dry, and again, if you've been on the budget, we do these periodically through the year to move funds into the right account. As we've learned, they can only come from certain places into certain places, so that's the restrictions. Other questions?
Counselor, I just had a question for, I should have asked when you were still up here, Mrs. Bridges. And this is just me getting educated, but when you say that the, you expect the capital reserve to be higher than the number you have here because revenue is looking better, what revenue are we, is that TRT? What are we talking about?
Yeah, in the facility capitals fund, it's funded from transit rent tax. Yeah, so that's looking, that revenue, so far, the first six months, anyway, is looking really, really good.
Don't tell us that.
All right. I'd take a motion then, that's closed, so we can go now to resolution number 201904, a resolution adopting supplemental budget of the city of Lincoln City, Oregon, for the fiscal year 2018, 2019, as approved by the city council in making appropriations. Move for approval? Would request a motion for approval?
So moved.
So moved? Mr. Hoagland, so moved? Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a second on the other end. Thank you, Counselor Cruz. Way to step right up. This is a roll call since it's budget item. Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And we have resolution number 201902, a resolution implementing public contracting delegation authorized in Lincoln City Municipal Code, Chapter 2.05 for the 2018-19 fiscal year and thereafter, replacing resolution 2017-21.
This is pretty much housekeeping. We did not do one because they're really last, last year, because we frankly didn't put an expiration in the 2017 resolution, but we've updated it a bit. There's really no substantive change to the delegated amount. The manager gets the full delegation and he cuts it in half with this resolution. The only thing that's new is we added our process of routing contracts into this resolution. So with that, I'd ask for approval of resolution 2019-02.
I move to approve resolution 2019-2 without modifications.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution 201902. Any questions, deliberation? Roll call, or just by voice? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none, it's approved, thank you. All right, now we get to move to some old council business and the business would be to elect council president. Council president serves when the mayor's not able. I won't say capable, because that would be too quick, but not able. Generally, that means when I'm not here. So, otherwise, the pay's the same, uniform's the same, no benefits. So entertain nominations for council president.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I nominate Judy Casper.
Judy Casper's been nominated. Is there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Hinton if she's up to it.
Ooh, competition.
Is that a motion or a nomination?
I would like to nominate.
Okay, we have, and Deanna Hinton as well. So, I could then move to close the nominations, if someone wants to go that route or another nomination.
I'll move to close nominations.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a, we have a motion to close the nominations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? So we have a ballot then on, need you to, top secret, it'll be called out and made public?
Obviously, it's not a secret ballot, but it, we will announce the, how you voted when Kathy tables it or tabulates it.
Yeah. Any, any remarks from either candidate?
We could have a debate.
Yes. Quick, of course, it's, you know, coin flip. We, I can remember one time, we had to do a coin flip for something. I think it was for council. Not me.
Oh, okay.
You're right.
It was a city council head flipping, it was just one coin. Kathy's got it.
Oh, and just like in the mail.
Circle round number one.
I won't look.
It's gonna be known in 10 seconds.
Don't run off! Sorry, I'm slow.
Yeah, it's nice to have all seven of us. It has been a while.
Okay, Counselor Kuz?
All right, here we go.
Voted for one vote, Counselor Hinton. Mayor Anderson, Counselor Casper. Counselor Hinton voted for Counselor Casper. Counselor Mark voted for Counselor Casper. Counselor Hoagland voted for Counselor Hinton. Counselor Casper voted for Casper.
Tough decision.
Counselor Parsons voted for Hinton.
Split down.
Four, three.
Four, three, that's good.
Hey.
Did I win?
Yeah.
All right.
I'll just do it this way.
All right, can we consider that read into the, oh, we have to approve the voting? Is there a process?
There's four votes, Casper, and three votes, Hinton.
No undervotes, overvotes, or absentees?
No.
All right, hanging chads. So, that's good for official, we can go on to the next agenda item, or do I need a?
No, I think you need a motion-
Accept the balloting?
A motion to appoint-
A point, yes.
A point as council president.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I make a motion to appoint Ms. Judy Casper as council president, please?
And a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to officially appoint Counselor Casper as council president. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed with a nay? Hearing none? Thank you, congratulations, Judy.
Congratulations.
Don't be sick.
Yeah, Mark. Mr. Mark. All right, so now, at 9:18, we are going into Southeast 48th Place Retaining Wall Construction Award. What do we? I understand at the bottom.
Don't you have it?
I did too.
Yeah.
You don't have, I don't have that.
You have skipped over 14, are you gonna?
Well, you know, really, we didn't, because I have-
There isn't a 14.
I have the official-
Two different versions. This was out there. We didn't pick that up.
You know, mine is pulled off the city website, like every citizen can do. And we're going right there. So, anyway, whatever the number is, we're doing Southeast 48th Place Retaining Wall Construction Award. Is it, is it not on yours? Okay. We'll come back and get it as number 12.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have a contract award recommendation to construct a new wall at Southeast 48th Place. A little bit of history, this project is located at Southeast 48th and Southeast 51st at the intersection there, right next to Schooner Creek. There's an existing about 100-foot-long block wall that's located, unfortunately, it was located over very shallow water main. So when we first looked at this, we thought, and this is why this money's coming out of the water fund, we thought we would move the water line. Couple problems with that, we also then have to move a sewer line and there's really very little room. On top of that, we started looking more carefully at the wall and that wall itself is of concern. It was not built, according to our engineers who looked at this, it was not built to recommendation of the standards that the manufacturer recommended. So we decided it was best to fix that wall, move that wall away from the water line, keep the water line where it is. So how we did this is we went out for, we, the city requested proposals for a design and construction team. And you all approved an exemption under the state contracting rules that allowed us to do a request for proposals and select a team that would both design and construct the new wall. Now, we did only, we received one proposal. Normally, that would be, or, you know, that could be a concern and we were concerned about that. However, in talking to the proposal team and their approach to the work, staff is convinced that this is the most cost-effective and best treatment for this wall. I'd like to point out that their, the design team members, two of them, came down today from their, from Vancouver area. And they're here tonight to answer any questions and make sure things went smoothly. They've been very good to work with so far and answered a lot of questions for staff, so I feel really comfortable recommending this team. Just briefly, we're going to, the wall, when it's done, it will look the same. The facade of the wall, the face of the wall will stay, those ultra blocks. However, there'll be a new wall constructed behind them. So, another cost savings that the proposal team recommended was to leave a section that's not high, a short section toward the east and then just build, then only the wall that we need to build, only replace that section of the wall that we need to replace. It'll still tie into the, those both walls will tie in, but they'll be keyed in and tied in together as well as new drainage, there's bad drainage right now. So there'll be a new drainage system and a swell on top to allow water to safely go through the back of the wall and to our storm system. So, the, the funding source is, again, the Waters Capital Fund and it was budgeted, this project was budgeted for $240,000. That was really a best guess number at the time. Even when we put together this budget, we were thinking we could just move the water line. So, their proposal was originally for the $342,201, but when, when we were allowed, we allowed or agreed that a cost savings to keep 65 feet of that existing wall in place, that would then shave the cost down to $279,151. We're also asking for a contingency, this is a pretty black and white reason. Once we peel back those, that first wall, the tall part of the wall, we may need to add another additional row of soil nails. The consultant team won't know that until they tear into that wall. So if we do have to add that second, the third row of soil nails, the total amount, and we're requesting this amount be authorized, is $306,151. I want to point out that this is a capital project and so there is a half of 1% for art, which is a $1,530, which would also be authorized. And then we'll have a small fee to Bureau of Labor Industries for $306. So, we are asking council to approve a construction manager slash general contractor contract award to contractors TBH and Associates LLC for the 48th Place Retaining Wall replacement in the amount of $306,151. Are there any questions?
Questions of council? Mr. Hoagland?
She can go first.
Oh, man, okay. Stephanie, hello. I'm just curious about the history of the original wall. Was that one that we, the city contracted for? And I'm just wondering what, what happened to get us to this point?
The project, that 48th Place was constructed, as well as the water and sewer lines raised, I guess, during this project in '03 and '04. Yes, it was a city project. We don't know exactly how the wall was constructed, the way it was. It's, wasn't per plan. So, why it is where it is and the way it is, I can't say. We just know that today, the wall, we, even if we, we need to, we need to repair that wall anyway. Again, based on our, our design team's recommendation, so, but I can't say why.
I have a follow-up question, which is, do we have someone that will oversee this project?
Oh, yes, this, so, this consulting team, we're not, we're not, we're not recommending another oversight, another team or another engineer to come and oversee-
Excuse me, I meant city staff.
It will just be Terry, my engineer and I, yes.
Counselor Hoagland?
So the original bid was for 100 feet and you said you saved money by removing 65 feet of the wall? So you have 35 feet of wall that you were going to be doing?
Well, let's see.
That's what it states.
Yeah, I, I, that might not be, let's see.
Yeah.
We're only taking out 65 feet, but the total was longer than that. I'm sorry about that 100 feet. The total wall is longer than 100 feet, so by taking out that 65, we still have 100 feet of wall left. That should have been the more accurate way to describe that, I'm sorry.
Second, okay, fine. So what exactly was done wrong to this wall?
Well, one visual you can see is-
The break where it starts going from angled to vertical?
Yeah, that's not good.
I mean, that's one that I would think.
The blocks are stacked right on top of each other, they're not keyed in, so they're, and you can see drainage shooting out in between.
Okay, so, so that, so the question is, is later, will that 65 feet be done?
No, that's, the 65 feet will stay and it's fine, it's the shorter section toward the west. I mean, I'm sorry, toward the east.
That is more vertical that will be remaining, correct? You'll do the westernmost 100 feet of this wall?
Yes.
Okay. So then, because it's directly on top of it, you're proposing to replace it with, what did you call, shot creek and soil nails, right?
Yes, but we're gonna move it back.
Okay, so then you're gonna then put all those blocks back on it, which is right near the water main that it is right now. So you're gonna add more weight to that same area, but improved drainage?
So we're gonna, we're gonna physically move that wall back several feet away. So the new shot creek wall will be several feet away from the water line. So the new shot creek wall will be several feet away from the water line. And rather than just leave that shot creek look, you have to finish it somehow.
Sure.
And there's expensive ways to make it look cool. But this way, we can still then just use those Ultra blocks and make that the face.
And then you'll ninety that into the...
And then they'll key it into that short section.
So that it's tied together that way.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions on the side?
Just piggyback off what Hoagland said. So is there not water line under that 65 feet we're leaving?
That's correct, and that's a good point. Yeah, the water line goes under the wall, and, yeah.
And does not go under that remaining piece, is that...
Yes, the way it angles, it's, it's not under in the, the wall that we're going to keep.
All right. Andy, you all right? Mr. Hoagland?
I noticed something that wasn't in it that normally is, is the engineers break down to the actual bid amount.
Well, because this was a design build package, we just had the budget number of $240. We didn't break, we really did not know what it was going to cost.
Because that was just a really $240 maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Stephanie, you've answered a lot of my questions that are already asked, but I guess when I see, one of my questions was where's the money coming from, from the Water Capital Fund? So that means a project is going to go away from the Capital Fund? Are we going to eliminate one of the budgeted projects, and which one?
We have contingency in the Water Capital Fund to pay for the difference between the $240 and the $306. The $240 was budgeted.
Right, but the excess, well, yeah, the excess, so...
We're asking that that comes out of contingency.
Okay. So no projects, that was my question, no project is going to be impacted that we had budgeted in, from there?
No.
Okay. The question I have then is if that wall, the remaining wall, what was the math? We're going to dip in roughly $66,000 or so, no, $36,000 into Capital Funds to make this balance. I guess what I, I was wondering why we wouldn't do the whole wall, find the other $100,000, you know, or other $66,000, and do it right the first time or a second time? And I, one, we've got the money in the fund, it means moving a project, and that's kind of where I was going, where is the money coming from for this over-budget item contingency? So I understand the proposal was to get it reduced in cost, the overall project, because it came in way over. We've done that by leaving part of a wall we never liked to begin with, and so we're going to say it's okay until, if this one was built in 2003, that gives us 15 years from now to have to redo stuff. I'm just wondering why we wouldn't do it all right now, other than you're trying to get closer to our estimated cost.
Yeah, the primary reason was to save money.
Right.
And the findings of our team was the short section of wall proposed to remain is okay structurally.
As we put on the table that we're way over budget, and so we need to find ways to reduce it closer to budget, so now I would ask the question, what's the best for, it's a water main there, it's a hillside that has known water problems and continues, so, you know, I'm just sensitive to, you know, doing this right once, and I'm not sure this is it. I guess if we went back to the team and said, "Look, don't worry about what's going to cost you," what would you do? Because there's a lot up on that hill, and with all the asphalt, all the runoff, you know, it must be putting a lot of pressure on that whole side.
If that's, if it's all right, I would like to ask the design engineer to ask us why, because they recommended, this was, again, an attempt to value engineer. I don't know the risk of leaving that 65 feet, so, do you mind if we ask?
No, that would be fine if council...
I wanted to speak to...
Mr. Mayor, well, he's coming up, let me just run some numbers on the effect of this.
Okay.
So this is coming out of the Systems Replacement Capital Reserve Fund, and we had an estimated, a reserve for future years of $735,820, or in using the governmental funds, that would be your contingency or your fund balance. Now although that doesn't affect any projects this year, it does affect future projects, because what is used on that, as we put together our forecast for the next five years, that will impact projects that we might have for next year or the year after that, because we use those reserves for, for future projects. So although it doesn't affect a project this year, the reduction of those reserve funds would affect projects in a future year.
And I understand, thank you. My concern, and that's why I want to hear, is, you know, this whole, this road has had numerous opportunities to get dug up, and we've done things there. It's been a, it's been a sore spot since my short tenure, 10 years. So when I saw this one, I thought, you know, I'm just concerned, we're not taking care of the problem as we could do, and another council will have to deal with this down the road, and...
Mr. Chandler said exactly what I was going to say, so do you want the consultant?
Yeah, I would like to invite...
My name's Tim North, I'm the owner and chief engineer, True North Geotechnical Services out of Vancouver, Washington. So my understanding from the project of being brought in by TBH as the design consultant is that the city already hired a geotechnical engineer, PBS Engineering, out of Portland to do a study, and their study, you know, was to try and figure out the cause. So basically, there's the section of wall, the 65 feet we're talking about, remaining. That section of wall, if you look at it, if you were out there right now, you would see that part of it leans in towards the slope, it's at a batter, and that's actually how it was constructed, we believe. There are no as-built plans for this. The section that's suggesting to be replaced is, is near vertical, and we believe, once again, because there's no as-built, that that was, or this is PBS's conclusion, I agree with it, was that, that perhaps the wall has started to move out of batter into vertical. If you're looking at the wall, also, it's not, that section of the wall that's, that's vertical, near vertical, is not constructed according to what the, the plans say. So what we're, what PBH is proposing to do is to peel back some of the Ultra blocks, the upper ones that seem to be coming out of batter, replace it with shot creek in that area, and then be able to construct the wall back up with a batter so that it all looks the same and acts the same. Now, the soil nail wall is separate from the, from the wall, it will actually be the new wall, and it will be hidden behind the Ultra block wall, and it will, it will, it will be providing all the support. The Ultra block wall will provide additional support, but only just the weight of it against the slope. So I, replacing the wall entirely, that's a whole different matter, because then you'd be getting into the lower levels of the blocks, and it, that's probably a completely different magnitude of cost. We think that, you know, the drainage issues can be cured by just, by adding better drainage behind the wall. And we're proposing a swale at the top to collect water runoff from the top, and then drainage, additional drainage behind the wall to collect any coming through the soil behind the wall. So that's the reasoning, so going back to why we, we don't think you need to replace the further end of the wall, it's because that seems to be performing as intended. It's the section of wall that we want to address is a section that does not seem to be performing as intended. Now, I'll be doing the design, PBS is also on our team, they're not here, but they'll be reviewing my design for, you know, because they did the original geotechnical work out there as well, so, hope that clears things up.
Well, and it helps, but, and I guess, if I've got it right, the project was bid for the whole wall to be back, correct? I mean, the, the, in order to, the bid that came in was higher than we estimated, which was the whole wall. And then you reconvened, what could you do to reduce the costs, and it was, don't take down that easterly section. So all I'm wondering about is to get back to the, the original bid, you know, if, wasn't that really the, the best proposal? Because it was the number-one proposal, to do the whole thing. It wasn't all cosmetics, I'm betting.
I, I think that, once again, the, the, we were, when, when TBH was invited to propose, the, the solution wasn't entirely clear to begin with, right? I mean, PBS's report was not clear on what the actual cause or what, what the solution was. So we were, we were already trying, we were already working from unknowns, and so when we were told that the, that the project, that there was already concerns about the budget, we went back and reviewed our design and tried, tried to nail it down better. So I think some of it is cost savings, and some of it is just maybe putting more time into making sure that the price is right, I guess. So, if that makes sense.
And I appreciate it, but you know how, that doesn't sound very good, though. Again, it's just that whole bank. We, the city are responsible for that whole drainage of that upside hill. We took on that responsibility. So I applaud, you know, this wall, and I know it's needed, and trying to find outlet for the water. My concern is, as the hill continues to drain and do what it does, you know, the rest of the wall will be impacted. The piece you leave, we leave there, is just over time, we'll have the same problem that the west side of the wall does. And I don't, I don't know that, I'm just suspecting. And so if, if it really is about just dollars, that's all I'm questioning, is if the better engineered solution is different than the one being proposed simply for cost savings, then I'd like to hear, you know, I'm just challenging, shouldn't we really consider the better engineered built solution? Because that is a known problem area, and we, the city, have spent lots of money in that whole area. And I'd just like to put it to bed, rather than push it down the road. So I, I don't know that you can answer the question, because you've done what, what staff has asked you to do, you've delivered. I'm the one creating the...
I don't know.
Creating the problem, so...
Mr. Mayor, counsel, my name's Jeff Hanson, I'm with TBH and Associates, and we were the prime proposer. We contracted with, with Tim North and with PBS Engineering for the engineering and design aspects. And what it really came down to is, you know, we gave you a price for the entire wall to be shot created, two layers of soil nails drilled into the bank, a shot creek face, and then to restock that wall in front of it, so that you've got essentially an Ultra Block Wall facade, but we know that we've got a drainage system in place behind it with not only the, not only a swale on top of the wall, but drainage built into the shot creek wall so that it can drain from the face of that shot creek. That's the way it was bid. At the time, they, the solicitation of the proposal asked for any sort of cost savings proposals that we might want to include. And one of ours was, look, you know, we, we took the PBS Engineering report that the city provided to us, and it basically said the easternmost 65 feet hadn't, did not appear to have moved in the 14 years it had been there. Appears, when we looked at it, it appeared to be stacked correctly. That portion of the wall, we, in the photograph, you can, you can clearly see a line right here, and, and we're essentially, this 65 feet was, is what we proposed to stay. And, and if you look at the way it's stacked, that 65 feet is stacked differently than as you move to the west, and we get these, these columns of stack. So, you know, usually when you've got brick, you're wanting to overlap them, you know, so there, you've got some, some resistance built in. These are stacked in a straight line, straight up and down. So, and that portion, that 100-foot portion, mostly on the west end, has really started to batter back toward the roadway instead of against that wall. So we know we've got movement of the hillside onto the, onto the block wall. I mean, that's the assumption that, that our engineers had made. So we looked at it, we said, how can we stabilize? We've got these two rows of nails, the shot creek, we proposed all the way across, and then because the report from PBS that was provided to us said, we think we've got 65 feet that's good, and we looked at it and we said, yeah, it appears to be stacked, and it doesn't appear to have moved in the 14 years it's been there. We got the original plans to look at, you know, when we did our analysis, and so we were pretty comfortable that we could offer the city that cost savings. That's not 100% job, you're right, it's 100 feet of a 165-foot wall. The proposal number we gave you, the total number, that was for the entire 165 feet.
I didn't hear any guarantee on any of this, to get me past 14 years?
I think the statute of rule to my proposal is 10, so...
Okay, you know, it's... Any other questions, counsel, your, I?
Will we get our sidewalk back there?
There is, there is money to repour that, we're pushing it back. You know, the entire wall isn't going to be pushed back. We've got mostly that western section where the water line runs underneath, that's the primary area that we're shoving back. We're going to excavate the wall in very small stages so that we don't have any, any landslide issues.
So it won't be walkable, that sidewalk?
There'll be a larger shoulder, but we're not planning on putting a proper sidewalk there yet.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, thanks both of you. Entertain a motion, then?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to approve the construction manager, general contractor, contract award to TBH and Associates LLC for the 48th Place retaining wall replacement project in the amount of $306,151.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Kooz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Next item on my agenda is Transit Room Tax Committee, Beverly Coen, Coine, Coen?
Cohen.
Cohen. Let's see, Deanna and I interviewed her, and she's on the Transit Room Tax presently, and matter of fact, she is the only member of the committee.
She's a quorum.
She's, we're having trouble getting a quorum. She is the experience, though, so she's looking to renew and actually helping encourage others to apply for this position that has really specific kind of requirements as far as the type of business the people need to be... need to be in, so that's a bit of the problem. But I would wholeheartedly recommend her for this appointment, but.
I would also. She's delightful and encouraging, and hopefully she'll be able to find a few other people to join her.
Entertain, any questions that we could answer from our interview? I'd entertain a motion, Counselor, for appointing Beverly Cohen.
I move to appoint Beverly Cohen to the Transit Room Tax Committee for a partial term expiring 8/26/2022. And I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With a nay, hearing none? Thank you. We also have an appointment to the Public Arts Committee, Larry Stevens, again. Deanna Hinton and I interviewed Larry, and this is also a renewal. He's currently on the Public Arts Committee, and it was, he had a short term, so we interviewed him again, see how it was going. It's always good to hear direct from a committee member, enjoys the committee and asks to be renewed, so.
Yeah, he's very, he's very much enjoying his time with the Public Arts Committee, and would like to continue in that, on that committee. So I, are you ready for a motion? I would move to approve Larry Stevens to the Public Arts Committee for a city resident position for a partial term expiring on 12/31/2021.
21, okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reappoint Larry Stevens to the Public Arts. All those, Mitch, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A nay? Hearing none? Thank you. The next item on my agenda is a request for joint meetings. Every year, we meet jointly with the Sletz Tribe Tribal Council and the Lincoln County Commissioners. Sletz Tribe has one date that they're available, July 15. And I'm hoping you all can make your schedule. It would be here, I, we would be hosting, is it not? Oh, we go to Sletz? Okay. We'd travel to Sletz and have a council meeting with them. So if you'd mark that down. And then the county gave us three dates, the July 3rd, 10th, and 31st. I'd encourage us not to do the 3rd, so it'd be between the July 10th and 31st. Is there any?
Either.
Anybody have not available? It's a Wednesday.
I'm completely available.
Any, any preference?
How about the 10th?
10th? Sounds good. Everybody all right? So let's go with July 10th. They'll be up here.
Are both of these at 6?
Yeah, county commissioners at 6. We'd travel to Sletz, so it'd probably be a little earlier, and we usually have a meal with them. So it's probably, I don't remember what time we-
Get there at 4?
Is it?
I don't know.
Four or five? Or we usually leave about, maybe 4, get there about 5?
Leave about 4, yeah.
Yeah, something like that, so late afternoon. Yeah? Dinner's at 5? Okay. All right. Any other questions there? Hearing none, let's go to my favorite, item 14, I think, but shows 12 on my list.
Wait, there's another.
Oh.
You need-
Hold on. What else do you have?
City council meeting for July. Oh, that's just the notification. Never mind.
I, I don't think, we don't have a motion needed for those, do we? Yeah, we're just, as long as we have agreement. All right. So let's talk about outside city committee appointments. Part of our privilege as city councilors is to represent the citizens and Lincoln City and other venues. In your packet, you had a, a list of some of them. And there's councilors that currently have been appointed from previous years and have asked to continue. So what's, would like to do, if some of these have interest, to be appointed as the alternate. And then what you do is shadow or in place of the primary sit in the meeting, but it would be a learning curve for you to attend. If I go down briefly, the first one is the Lincoln County Transportation. Councilor Hoagland's been doing that, and it has primarily to do with public transportation. They don't meet that often, but that certainly bus transportation has been an issue for Lincoln City, and they're getting new money, so it's a great time to advocate for. Is anybody interested in this and to be a, Mr. Councilor Hoagland would like to remain, but we could use an alternate? Is there any?
I, I will volunteer as alternate.
Okay, I've got you in mind for ODOT after sticking me about streets and highways, so be careful what you ask for. I'm only kidding, you can do it all.
And ODOT's not on here.
Yeah, that's-
Sort of related.
They are, they can be, different funding sources. But let's, for now, put you down, Rick? Mark?
I'm, I'm just trying to jump in.
I hear you.
Bend here a little bit.
I hear you. Now, here's one that's the City Library Board. Councilor Casper has been on that, and she's willing to give that up, because I've asked her to move to a different one. This is the only committee that requires a city counselor on it. And Judy, I don't know if you could brief what it entails, meet with the board, at the board meetings, or?
Yeah, you, you meet with the board once a month. It's the most interesting board I've been on. You, you see all the things that are going through our library and all the involvement we have with the community. It's just amazing. And now they're, they've got these Wi-Fi systems to rent out for students, which I'm excited about. And you learn about all the new authors first coming to the library. It's, it's, it's really enlightening. It's very well-run and organized, and energetic, enthused people attend.
And again, your role there would be to be kind of the council liaison and, you know, questions?
You just, you just listen to their concerns, and if they need clarification, it's something, sometimes there might be a policy issue or a budget issue, and then you just respond. You don't get a vote, but you get to be present.
Anybody interested in the library?
I'd volunteer.
Thank you, Mitch. Anybody want to be a alternate?
I will.
Okay, thank you. And here's an exciting one, the Solid Waste Disposal District. That's garbage recycling.
That is very interesting.
Transfer fees. It, actually, it is.
Yes, it is. Currently, we're, we finished the materials manual for the whole county. We're the only county in the state that has such a committee, advisory committee, and it's dealing with recycling and how to, we deal with the three haulers, and how to get education more to the public. And currently, DEQ has green school in Newport, and I'm lobbying to get green, green school with grants for Lincoln City schools.
So in this case, Judy's asked to stay and, but would like to have an, an alternate as well, if someone's interested in this area.
I'll be your alternate.
Will you?
Yep.
Thank you. And then, fourth one is the Oregon Coastal Zone Management. These guys meet quarterly. It's really driven by the counties. We're members as a city, and it's ocean issues. And, you know, it's provided, I've done it when I was mayor before, I found it very interesting because of, you know, we all have the ocean to our west, and, you know, all different ways it, it impacts what we do. I'll be representing, but would love to have anybody as an alternate that's interested in, you know, ocean issues and the impact the ocean has on land.
It'd be interesting, that one.
And then Cascade West Commission on Transportation. This is Cascade West Act, as it's called. We meet probably every other month, and this is where your ODOT dollars projects get allocated. And typically, travel to Albany, because that's where the people are. And we review projects, and projects the city puts in and advocate for funding of our projects on state highways. But it'd be a great time to join me, and Mr. Mark has been real concerned about congested traffic and street lights and asphalt, so I thought he, I would just love to travel with me to Albany.
Sure. There's my, there's my losing effort for a traffic light, but I just, I just need to get educated.
Thank you, Rick. Okay, then we have another Cascade West Council of Governments. This is the executive board of, again, we're, or not executive board, but the, the board itself. Judy Casper, I've asked to do this, Susan Walke did this. The Cascade Council of Governments has a lot of different projects, economic development, Meals on Wheels, seniors. So it's an opportunity to make sure we're getting our fair share and hearing how others are doing. And so I asked Judy if she wouldn't consider. They also meet in Albany. You can do it by video in Toledo. But this would also be an opportunity for an alternate at this committee, if someone was so interested. I still hear, I'm-
It meets every, every other month.
Every other month? Nobody's interested in all the other aspects of-
Which one is it?
This is-
I don't have it on.
I don't have it either.
That's right, you don't have it on. It, it didn't show up in the packet. It's Cascade West Council of Governments, COG. All the regions have a COG.
All right, I'll go for it.
It's, Judy, do you know what time of day these meetings are?
2 to 4. That's in, yeah, Albany or Toledo. I, I'm intending to go to Toledo.
Every other, every other month? Yeah.
Okay. You're all right? You can try it.
I can try it.
You're an alternate.
Yeah.
You'll, you were doing it already?
Yeah. You're just an alternate.
Yeah, yeah, you'll just, oh, an alternate. Oh, well, all right.
And Mr. Chandler, I saw the notes on the Homeowners Association for Villages, is, would this be a time also to?
This would be a great time.
So.
In the past, we have had, I believe it was Mayor Williams, but it does not have to be the mayor, it can be a council member.
Who else is on the, and?
And Councilor Hinton.
Deanna, oh, yeah. So, like, since we're the owner of the property, villages, Cascade, and there are owners there, other owners, but there's a homeowners association and needs decisions, so it's a body of three? Is it a three-person?
I believe Marge Boyd is the other member.
Another owner of land. So we need a, someone who's interested in homeowners association activities, specifically this one, to replace Mayor Williams.
And just to give you some information, the HOA has an annual meeting. We've held a couple other ones besides that, because the master plan had hit another goal, and so we wanted to hear about that and talk about any issues, and vegetation is high on the list.
So is this, how often and frequency of meetings?
There's one annual meeting.
Just really?
There's one annual meeting, and then we can call other meetings as information comes in.
Three, the most, four meetings a year, or?
Yes.
The least, probably one.
The most, yeah.
So it's not demanding?
I'll do it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. We have our list. I have, I'll share it with you.
I, I have one more on my list than you have on yours.
Okay.
Mid Willamette Area Commission on Transportation.
Yeah, I, I had that, and I was going to mention, I'll drag Rick along with me, because this is one in the same.
What if he's kicking and screaming?
No. What, what that is, is another one of these acts, Area Commission on Transportation. I go, it's in Salem, as a non-voting member, but for the sole purpose of advocating for Highway 18. This is the committee that decides on anything that goes on 18. And from what I can tell, they believe it stops at Grand Ron and doesn't come west. So it's important, but we go, in essence, under the cover of being a representative from Cascade West Act, so there are ways to get into these meetings. So we will be, Mr. Mark and I will be on that one. Trust me.
Do we need funds to bail you out or something?
No.
New budget item?
All right. Kathy, I've got any-
I just need to double-check one here. Number, number three, the solid waste, was the alternate, Rick?
Mitch.
Mitch.
Otherwise, we're good. We've got everybody, right?
I think so.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. All right. Again, a reminder that there's no extra pay for that, it's just learning something new and representing Lincoln City. While I've got that, could I add to this? So we just did a couple of committees for appointments to committees. For, at least this year, could we try a different process on the interview? I'm looking at Mr. Chandler and Kathy. In essence, what we've done in the past is kind of assigned early counselors to different committees and then interview candidates. Could we instead allow you, or whoever's setting up appointments, to just go down the list of counselors to get the first two counselors that have the time available that the applicant can meet them? And that, that way, we're also rolling different committees, so no one person is stacking the deck on parks or public works or something like that? Is?
I, yes, we can do that, but we do have a policy that council approved by a motion that we may have to amend to change it.
Maybe not. Maybe in the code.
I did.
So maybe we need to wait to see if we can just do it by motion, or we have to change the?
We'll, we'll look at it and let you know at the next meeting.
My rationale was just, with seven people, you will be able to serve the client quicker than trying to wait for two people to interview. And that's, that's been the policy, anyway, to interview applicants, at least two counselors, interview them, and then we're in a position to make recommendations to the rest of the council when we bring them, bring them forward.
Mr. Mayor, I had heard of another way to do this, and that, that members of the committee themselves interview the applicants and make a recommendation to council? Just another idea.
Yeah, I'm a big fan, though, of getting to know our citizenry and as elected, that then gives us the opportunity to, so you're right. Why don't we, if you'll bring it forth?
What it says in, and this is in the point of bodies ordinance that was adopted by council, it says selection of individual interviewers or interview subcommittees. Two counselors shall be appointed by the mayor at a regularly scheduled city council meeting to conduct interviews for open positions. Groups of two can be appointed for multiple openings. You can conduct the interviews as individuals, or you can conduct the interviews as a committee. If you do the committee route, you've got to comply with public meetings law. If you do the individual interviews- If you do the individual interviews, you don't have to. But I think the operative language here is the mayor can appoint groups of two and if you want to say Kathy, take the next two and then the next two, and that's what you're, you're doing. I mean, you're, you're basically assigning it to Kathy to take the, take two and then the next two and then the next two and then?
Or, yeah, I'm clarifying, two available, you know, so you, if the applicant can only meet, you know, I'm, I'm remembering, we had a terrible, terrible time trying to find a date. So is there?
All right, let's, we'll, we'll look at this and see if we can propose a way to articulate it that people don't get excited about.
Thank you.
Lights are going to shut off soon.
Okay. Uh, that's all I have. We're down to city manager and attorney reports.
I have just two items. The first one is just an invitation. January 22nd will be our kickoff event for the new teen space at the community center. That will go from four to 7:00 PM. We're very excited to show that off and invite you to that. And then also, I put on your desk a couple of documents from Helping Hands and on councillor Casper's behalf, and she'll talk about that a little bit more under the council's discussion portion, but I just want to direct your attention that that's why you have that. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Great. Mr. Avatilla, nothing?
He forgot.
Okay, question?
Well, I think he forgot one.
Oh.
Were you going to ask us about a retreat?
Oh, oh, thank you, thank you, one other day. So work meetings as we're going forward, you know, we have one that is scheduled for the 29th of this month. We have the next one that was scheduled for February 4th. And then we were looking at one at the end of February. And originally, we had looked at the evening of the 26th. However, in your, one of your recent training meetings, you discussed the idea of a retreat. And so we'd like to find out if you're interested in that. Timeframe that I would think would be a good afternoon or a good, you know, probably about four to five hours. And normally, when I've held retreats in the past, we've done them on a Saturday because it's a way people are away from, they have a chance to get away from their regular daily duties. So my question is, are you interested in a retreat? And if so, what dates would work for you? Now, the purpose of that retreat would be the same as the meeting we would have on the 26th, and that would be a council priority session to really discuss where you want to go for the next year and plus as a council.
Mr. Chandler, are you saying we wouldn't have a meeting on the 26th then?
We would not. This would be in the place of it.
That's this month?
February.
February. Yeah, we just need it to be after February 4th because that gives us the chance for our department heads to finish their discussions with you and, and with that, then we'll be ready to go.
So, so that would be scheduled typically on the work session on the 26th of February? And so in lieu of that, you're asking for, is there an open date, say the 23rd or the 16th? Is that?
Now, I might point out that the one day that I can't do it is on the 23rd.
Okay.
Because I will not be here. And actually, the earlier the better because, because one of the things that you'll find is that we hope to have what you discuss reflected in the budget as well, where it can be. We're in that budget process now. The earlier that you have an opportunity to let us know, the more we can consider budget items as well.
So by February 4th, we will have gone through the departments, the, all the work sessions. So anytime after the 4th, so the 9th, if, if you're looking at Saturdays, is an option? So that would be open?
9th works for me.
Works for me, sure.
And you guys that work for a paycheck?
I don't see the point. Because if we're going to talk about the same thing here, it's going to be the same thing. I, I will concede and go with you guys, but I'm just saying, it makes, I mean, now I'm going to go on a Saturday to do the same. I hear, I heard you. I heard you before.
Instead of the 26th.
I get, I get, and then where's it going to be at? You know what I mean? It's just, I'm, I'm just going to say yes to whatever you guys say.
So let's exchange then the 26th for the 9th?
And where will it be?
I will let you know.
Details to come out. And that's a half day?
Half a day.
So more than our usual two hours?
Earlier the better.
Prefer, your preferences of the morning?
Like 8:00 AM, yeah.
Morning, early.
Not 8:00.
8:00.
Yeah, 8:00 AM.
10:00 is okay.
Do you do wake-up calls?
10:00 is okay.
Okay.
Remember, Ron will have to get it set up and all that kind of stuff.
Yep, I'll, I'll work on that starting tomorrow.
Okay. Then, great time for public, oh, I, I know why I put down public comments. Was there anything from public comments that this would be, there was proposal of a blue ribbon committee, there was proposals of suggestions? Oh, oh, yeah, to bring, Scott Torrens talked about concern about construction times.
Can I ask a question about that one?
Please.
Do we have any control over that? Is that mostly ODOT projects? I'm just?
Sidewalks would be ours.
We can give you a little bit of an update on this. So we have not put the bid out yet. We've received some comments back from ODOT that we're reviewing. When we do put out the bid, we are going to put out working at night as an alternate on the bid so that we could, so that we could take a look at what the actual cost, extra cost would be for doing it at night. When we get that information, that will help us to determine, first of all, is it a day job or is it a night job? And then also, what time of the year it would be done as well. All of the other things as far as the number of flaggers and how people are going to access their properties, all of that is included in the bid document. And so that should come with the, with the bids that we would receive.
Great. I, I think that would give us more information to see if it?
Yeah, so it, so you won't see that information until the bids come in, but we will be sending that out as part of the request for proposals.
Great, okay. And I think Miles's comments are, again, just what we hear a lot and agree with, is the, looking for, positioning ourselves for living wage jobs. So I don't know that any committee needs to be taking action at this point.
You will have an update as part of your department updates with Allison pertaining to economic development. And part of that is, we call it phase two of our economic development projects and plans. She's diligently working forward on the development of the properties, but there are other ideas that, policy questions that we have that we want to bring forward to you, and she'll bring those on the 4th of February.
Good, thank you. And now additional comments from public present? Nope, no comments? Nobody wants to come up? All right. And traditionally, we do comments from city councillors. You know, Mr. Hoagland?
Yes.
Do you have a comment?
I do.
Please.
I would like to, and I don't know if you'll be talking about the tsunami run?
I leave it to you, no.
So the Family Promise is having what's called the 2019 Tsunami Run. And Family Promise of Lincoln County is excited to present the 2019 Tsunami Run. The Tsunami Run is a fundraising opportunity to help us continue to serve homeless families in Lincoln County. And they're partnering with Lincoln City Community Center and Fitness 101. And they're currently looking for community members and teams of three to participate in a 30-minute timed run-walk event on a treadmill. Exceptions will be made for those with health, health issues. Before the event takes place, teams will be asking for pledges towards their 30-minute time slot. So donations can be made as a flat rate for the entire 30 minutes or donate per miles achieved. There'll be two winning events in this team. The first winner, winner will be determined by the number of miles accumulated by the team, and the second winner will be determined by the highest amount of pledges collected. So this is for February 13th. And so an opportunity to, to, you know, bring up some donations. So I'll be participating. I think it was said costumes are encouraged, so who knows what?
Are you looking for team members or you have your team?
Yeah, I need team members because I'm going to do it.
I'll be on your team.
You will be on my team?
I'll be on your team.
There you go. We, we need one more. All right.
I think Britt's recruiting me, so.
Councillor Mark, do you have any, anything you want to share?
Uh, you know, happy to be here. It's going to be a big education process, as we've said, and I, I just kind of wanted to, you know, stuff goes by so fast sometimes, and I just, I know, I guess Judy was going to talk about Helping Hands, but Amanda spoke, and the first item, I just want to underscore what she did here, this, under the partnership, her little handout for collaboration efforts. As I understand it, I don't want to overstate this, but I think she really took the initiative to, she recognized that there were families that were having food issues and were having difficulty taking advantage of, there's so many free meal sites around. And she talked to the county?
Transit.
Transit, and set up this free pass system. And as you said, 80 families that were unable to get to meal sites are now able to do that, and the program's expanding throughout the county. And I think she deserves some recognition and praise for that.
Agreed. That, nice to see the initiative and see results. Yeah, thank you. Bring that. Councillor Hinton, nothing? Councillor Coos?
I'm good, thank you.
Really?
Yeah.
Councillor Casper, talk to us.
Okay, I will. Well, I've been kind of following up on housing, transitional housing, emergency shelter. I've been to Oregon Housing Community Service Meeting, I've been to Mental Health Advisory Committee Meetings, and through all this, I'm, I'm learning about regional resources of nonprofits working together in various counties, like the Community Action Team or the Care Team. And I came upon, upon Helping Hands, and it's one of the grantee that applies each year for our community. And I did a field trip and visited the facility, and I've included it one of their pamphlets. And the photograph is a finished boarding house up in Astoria that they completely turned into a center. And instead of having services in the community, they're brought into this facility. And the people there are allowed for emergency shelter for a minimal amount of time until they can put them into the housing, the temporary transitional housing. They need a referral first from these various departments, police, fire, you know, community. The community is totally bought into this. I've also included a list of the Board of Directors and the Advisory Board. Claire Hall is, is one of the advisors. You see, there's police chiefs, fire people, mayors. They have 12 facilities, they've been around for 15 years. They're in four counties and six cities. And so ours here, I didn't even know about, has a reentry program that's housing men and has for 13 years. And you might have known this program as thugs on drugs. It was started by someone who was homeless for 17 years. He's an amazing fellow. He has a staff of six people. He's creating a program where they keep track of all this data, so the data can be shared with everybody in the community that makes the referral. They have a great work program. They deal with resources, recovery and reentry. And so when we look at housing, I think we as a community need to look at housing for the people who are most vulnerable in our populations, not just emergency, but we talk about, well, where, where do they go when, when they leave the emergency shelter? I'd, I'd like to have them present to us a presentation in the near future, and I, I think that we would all benefit from how they've been here and how they've done this. So much that they've even rehabilitated this, this building, several buildings. The other one is a picture in Tillamook. It's the naval base up there. That's also one of their facilities. And they have their own construction company. They come in and they renovate the building themselves. And they're self-sustaining. I think they have a wonderful program that we should consider looking at. So by consensus, I'm going to ask that maybe we could direct Mr. Chandler to ask them to do a presentation as soon as possible? Does that sound like a good idea?
Yeah. A question I would have is, do you think, is that a 15-minute or is this, I'm, I'm wondering if we should use another venue to have a presentation because it sounds like they have a lot of information?
I think they're pretty, they're pretty succinct about it. Fifteen, 20 minutes.
Would that would do?
Yeah, I, I think so.
I, I would think as a presentation of council sometime, keeping in that frame, timeframe?
And one of the questions I'm going to have for that group, well, not for the group, but Judy said they're well-received in Astoria, so I'd like to hear what people from Astoria or Tillamook have to say, you know, just if there's some endorsement or concern that the city officials or people in the cities, I don't know how easy it is to get to something like that, but I think that would be helpful.
Like contacting city councils in those two cities?
City managers, just bounce something off them and say, can you just write me, send me an email paragraph? Does this work in your town or?
Everybody else all right for a presentation, some council meeting?
Yeah.
All right, by consensus, we're there. All right, Mr. Parsons, are you all right? Judy, is that?
Yes, sir.
More? Okay. Mr. Parsons?
Hi, Dr. N.
Nothing? I have a couple of things. One, Diane Coos and I are going to League of Cities Legislative Days on the 24th. If anybody else is going, welcome to ride along. The others, I noticed we've all been getting emails from the Oregon Emergency Preparedness Workshop in Bend and wondered if anybody was planning on going. I, I think it, snow is still on the mountain in March, but I'm not sure. And I don't know, Mr. Chandler, if we'd have an emergency preparedness person on staff by that time?
We do as of today.
Today, all right.
Ken, Ken Murray, Murphy, Ken Murphy, started today.
Oh, great, okay. So that's, that's an opportunity, if somebody's interested, Hinton, about preparedness and all that kind of stuff? It shows March 18th, the week of, I don't know, in Bend. I can send you the email, yeah, I can send you an email if you want. Okay. And then the other is, is it okay to break the news from Ron's report on, you know, K9? You know, if, if you don't get Ron's report, you really aren't on social media enough. And I, I got this nice letter asking for money, as they should. The City of Lincoln City Police are going to raise funds to support a K9 program. We've had a lot of talk about a K9 program. And so they're wishing to add a K9 to the program and not ask for budget funds, but ask for donations to fund this program. And this is the opportunity. I'm looking for an easy way. LincolnCityK9.com is the place to go, a website, and I bet you can do PayPal right there and donate. Other than that, I'm good. And I would like to say that I hope never again that we stay until 10:30 at night on a council meeting. I don't want this to be my reputation. The agenda was provided. So with that, we'll call it a night. Thank you.
We had a little more to do this time.
Mics are off.